This is the April 27th Planning, 2023 Planning Board Session. And so we have a call to order.
Chair Lefaro.
Present.
The Vice Chair, Affinity, is absent. Secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato, I understand, will be a few minutes late. Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham is absent.
Great.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join us for a Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just item, if you have your agendas, I think it's item 25 is off.
Okay, I'll put it's number three, Jane Frith.
Is off?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Is it off the agenda?
Yeah.
The three Jane Frith is off. And number 17, and number 25.
Okay, so 17 is, 917 West, yeah, we have to identify these for the records.
And they're not matching the numbers that we had.
Right.
So then.
At the microphone?
Is off?
Jane Frith was old two.
Anthony, do you want to just come up so they get it on the?
It was old two, number two, and now it's number three.
Yeah, on the agenda, I see there's number three.
So that's off, okay. And then?
And then number 17, 917 West Main LLC.
Let me just see what that was.
That was number 16.
Right, they're all a number off.
Okay.
Okay. And then what's the next one after?
And then, for me, it was number, on the new agenda, 25, 917 West Main LLC, under secret.
Oh, gosh, it's so broken.
That was old 24.
Yeah.
Your Scuttle Hole is off, is that?
Yes.
Okay. So on the new one, it's 24, 246 Scuttle Hole Road, as a service restoration, that's off.
That's off. Okay, so we have four off. Okay, so going in order, Jeff, you're first.
Yes, so then item number two. Four and six Oak Drive, unless a pre-application report. This is found in your packet on page number 11.
We have something up on the screen? Yeah. Okay, Jeff, yeah, we've got it.
Okay, so this application was last before the board, February 9th, for a pre-application conference or a public hearing. This project proposes two lot subdivision, standard plan, at the address located at four and six Oak Drive on the hamlet of Noyak.
Can you make the map larger?
Sure. Just to orient you, this property is just a few feet away, a few hundred feet away from Cromer's Market.
Uh huh, oh, yes.
Off of Noyak Road.
Yeah, we had a public hearing on this.
Correct.
Yeah, is it on the other side of Noyak Road?
Yes, on the north side of Noyak Road.
Okay. And this is where the issues with the buses, yes, parking?
Exactly, turn around. So the applicant is proposing to essentially reestablish single and separate, two individual lots that were merged. They were held in the same name, essentially, I believe, they were merged back in 1958. The applicant would be required to go in front of the ZBA for lot area, as well as some frontage, a lot width, which I'll skip over to page number, page number three in your packet.
In the report, you mean?
In the report, excuse me. So, yeah, the proposed subdivision requires relief from ZBA to reestablish single and separate status. The relief would include 125 feet, where 150 feet is required for lot ones.
And width?
And width, and lot width. And then also, for lot two, they'll also require a lot area relief, where the existing lot is sized at 8,696 square feet, where 40,000 is required. I'll reiterate, the lot itself is located in CR, excuse me, R40 zoning, which requires a 40,000 square feet in lot area. Lot number one, I believe that's actually incorrect. So lot number two, on the plan, is 5,218 square feet, where 40,000 is required, so they'd require a variance for that as well. Property is located in the New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area, so generally we require a Phase 1 or Phase 1B archaeological report.
Anthony, can I just want to interrupt you? One lot is 4,000 square feet and one is 5,000 square feet, and they're in 40,000 square foot zone?
Correct. So in totality, both lots are 13,914 square feet. They were single and separate lots, they were prescribed lots, or described lots, held in the same name unfortunately, and the applicant wanted to subdivide them so that she could build on the second lot where the one-story garage is currently on. The existing subdivision community, which I'll show you right now.
Madam Chair, Board Member Catalinato is here.
Welcome, Craig.
The community itself is comprised of smaller, subsized lots. This would most likely be the smallest lot, if approved, amongst the community itself along Oak Drive. We did, during our February 9th public hearing, received a lot of comments from the public. Those comments included, which I'll list off for you, density is a major issue within the community, more density on Oak Drive would pose a safety concern. Oak Drive is essentially a dead-end street, but still has traffic issues. And the proposed lot two is significantly undersized in comparison to the existing lots within the community. Some of the comments were about having issues with turnaround, people utilizing Oak Drive for turnaround off of Noyak Road, to access either Cromer's Market or some neighboring restaurants. So.
And also, you know, you should have included the school bus stop. The school bus stops at that corner.
Right at the corner.
So people can't even get out of that road. It's a very constricted.
Right, so in totality, that's the sentiments, yeah, we received from the public regarding the subdivision itself. Again, the requested action would require ZBA approval. It's pretty straightforward, as the size of lots don't meet 40, R40s dimensional regulations. But as far as the board's concerned, we received comments back from engineering. Engineering comments were, they recommended a covenant requiring three-inch drainage for our future impervious services, blue roofs, driveways, and tennis courts. Also recommended a covenant requiring both lots to access from Oak Drive, and that no access may be taken from Noyak Road. Also recommended no access be taken from Oak Drive within 50 feet of the intersection with Noyak Road for traffic safety concerns. In the final, sorry?
I'm sorry. Where are your records?
I'm sorry, we're at the engineering division, which is on page three of the report.
Jeff, could you show us where 50 feet will be?
Sure, let's measure it.
On that map?
That's 56. Not sure if you can see this. But this is essentially where 50 feet would land you, from the center line, if I took it from the edge of the road.
I guess I should have said from, I think I said from the map, not?
Oh, from the map?
Because it's.
Yeah, the map, I won't be able to tell, it's not the scale, but I can kind of give you some perspective.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm wondering, I don't, I don't know.
50 feet is not a lot, essentially.
Pardon?
50 feet is not really a lot, nor does it actually even reach the second proposed lot on the subdivision map.
Yeah, the first lot is around 125.
So access for that wouldn't even be at the nearest corner of that subdivision, of that proposed lot number two on the subdivision map. So 50 feet is essentially right around here.
I mean, the lot's 125 feet, so.
Right, so 50 feet is right around here.
If you take it from the lot line, it's, what, 40% of the way up?
Yeah, so 50 feet would be right around here.
That piece of property?
But there, the town engineer recommended from, 50 feet from, just make sure I quote it correctly. 50 feet.
From the intersection of the roads?
Of the intersection with Noyak Road, for the safety concern. So essentially, 50 feet would land you right around here.
I guess what I'm, what I'm questioning is, I don't know what the plans of the owner is, but there's a house there and there's a garage, there are two separate lots.
Correct.
If the, if that house stays, where, where is the driveway in relation to the engineer's recommendation?
Okay, let me go back to the proposed map. So existing driveway.
Yeah, so the garage appears to be about 100 feet.
Correct.
From the intersection.
But the garage itself is located on proposed lot two. Which is the second proposed lot on this subdivision map.
And it looks like there's a driveway on the, on the front lot from Noyak Road.
It's, it looks like a paved walkway.
Okay.
Yeah, this is more of a paved walkway off of Noyak Road. So essentially, if the, if they move forward the application for subdivision, they would have to delineate where they're going to propose their driveway for the first lot.
Well, I think that has to be included, and I want to make the recommendation that number two become number one, and that we say that the proposed subdivision results in two very undersized lots.
Right.
With substantial square footage relief.
Yep.
I think that has to be number one.
Okay.
I mean, that second lot is 1/8 the size of what the zoning required.
Right, yeah.
There is currently a ZBA application pending.
Okay.
They're reading on the Planning Board's report.
Correct.
Okay, so it should be very clearly stated.
Okay.
I mean, the fact that the owner's home was, was not separated, in my opinion, is the only reason to even look at this.
I didn't hear the first thing you said.
I said, the fact that it's, it merged, it's no longer single and separate, is the only reason to say, well, maybe they are entitled to two lots, because the existing lot is substandard.
Correct.
And that's grandfathered, but the two separate lots are not.
I wonder legally how that is. I mean, once something merges, then you have to go through the subdivision process, so.
Yeah, there are previously individual lots, pre-1958, if I'm correct on that, and they wanted to reestablish that. Obviously, in 1958, had different zoning than today's zoning, but we have to look at it.
Right, we have to look at it now, and also how the neighborhood has changed and developed.
Absolutely.
So I think that you need to be more detailed, particularly if they're waiting for the Planning Board report.
Sure, sure.
And it's in the APOD.
Correct.
Yeah, which is why, which is why it was upzoned, I'm sure.
Now, both lots are essentially improved. The one-story garage, obviously, as part of the subdivision, would have to be demolished or removed. But as we've stated already, there's both substandard lots, even with them being merged. So I add the additional information comments from the board, if there's anything else we left behind.
Question, Jeff, and I don't know if you have it offhand, but are all the other lots on the street substandard?
They are substandard.
Mix?
But not necessarily to this degree. I believe when I did an analysis of the community, I think the smallest lot was around 15,000 square feet. So I'd go back and double-check, but this would, essentially, lot number two on this subdivision map would definitely be the smallest lot.
Okay, so just be very precise in your language.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other comments on this application? So as amended?
As amended.
A motion to approve the?
Pre-application.
Right. Are any of these things action deadlines? I don't see any action deadlines on anything.
Yes, it's on the agenda.
Four and six Oak Drive?
Correct.
I don't see action deadline on it.
Action deadline, April 12th, extended to April 27th.
Okay, all right, it didn't, it's buried in there.
Yeah, I'll highlight it next time for you.
Next time, okay. So motion to approve it as amended, if you would send us the amended report.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, five in favor, two absent. Okay.
Number two.
So. So where's number one? That was number two.
Lauren, just, if I may, as a little side, not having to do with this application per se, but you raised the question about the merger, right, and that being a consideration? So interestingly, an applicant has an option to go to the zoning board to get a single and separate determination. There is a method for them to do it absent the planning board. So if they don't go to the zoning board, or they're not successful in getting a determination made, that these, in fact, are considered single and separate, because they have to demonstrate that that's what the intent was, that to keep them single and separate, then they're stuck going through the subdivision process. So I just wanted to let you know that there, in fact, is a mechanism for them to unmerge properties.
Which they have not.
No, they submitted a subdivision application and are doing variances for the zoning board. Yes. So we're doing number?
Three is off.
Three is off. Number four, Greiner, Joseph, let me get to him. I'm gonna have to.
Page 38.
It is page 38, yep, let me just.
Full disclosure, Madam Chair, Greiners are close personal friends of mine, but I don't think, I think I can look at this application without.
I think so.
So this is a request for a covenant amendment.
Page 38.
There's nothing in here.
There's nothing in the, in the packet.
Really?
There's a map, but there's no text.
And there's no text.
No report.
There is no, because there's no action. This is a discussion of request for a covenant amendment before we do a resolution. I always have them come in to see if you're even good or not. So this is a covenant amendment, a subdivision was done. What's that? So 2009, if you can see up here, there was a two-lot subdivision that created this piece here, and I believe the piece to the south here. It was a two-lot subdivision. At that time, a buffer was required along this property line. I believe it was.
Is this where the bamboo is?
That's where the bamboo is now, it's all overtaken by bamboo, but it was the only buffer, I mean, that was part of the subdivision that was required. No other buffers in the neighborhood. The applicant, the owner of the property, has bamboo that's growing in here, they wanted to go in there and take care of that, but it's a 25-foot wide, not disturbance, not fertilization buffer. Interestingly, when the subdivision was done, this house was there at the time, so I couldn't figure out why, at that time, that a full 25-foot buffer was imposed. But needless to say, the applicant wanted to go in there and correct this, so I believe Jim Hume is here, they want to see if the board will either, A, eliminate the 25-foot buffer, or at least reduce it, if they weren't willing to eliminate it. And so I have Jim.
Did we ever find out if the town has?
Did, no, I don't think we, we'll find out.
Okay, invasive species, yeah.
So, good afternoon, for the applicant, James N. Hume, 323 Mill Road, West Hampton Beach, New York. As indicated, there is, I think it's, yes, there is imposed on this property as part of the subdivision from 2009, a 25-foot wide buffer. I reviewed the record to the best of my abilities and couldn't find any basis for why this buffer was imposed. It was, I believe, on the internal lot line between the two lots that were created, so it's a buffer between lot one and lot two. There's no wetlands, there's no, no indication that there was any particular species that was being protected, there was no indication that it was near any wetlands or any other feature as to why the buffer was imposed. And as indicated, the buffer area is, and as I've indicated in my application, the buffer area has become overrun with bamboo. It's, because it's a non-disturbance, so can't control it, just making life difficult for my clients in general, without having any specific reason for why it was imposed in the first place.
Did you say that the buffer, as best you can figure out, was imposed because of the two-lot subdivision? Because the lot below is to the south.
Well, Jim, these, the lot created this lot and this lot, but the buffer is between this lot.
It's a different buffer.
I'm sorry, yes, not the internal, but, yeah, but it was, it was created as part of the two-lot subdivision.
Yep, that's correct.
It was a condition of that subdivision. And as indicated, you know, I've been involved in situations where there were conditions that warranted a buffer, but I don't see that any of those conditions existed at the time that this was granted, and certainly don't exist today.
So if you take out the 25 feet, what would you do, would you plant anything in there?
I think they would, it would just become part of their yard. I imagine they might install something just to maintain the privacy, but.
Yes, that's what I was asking.
Are they looking to go in and remove the bamboo that's there?
Well, I think they're, well, what they're looking for is to have the restrictions of the buffer removed completely, but one of the motivating factors is the fact that it's become overrun with an invasive species.
It grows and grows and grows.
It does, it does. And I think they would like to just make it part of their property, part of their yard.
Looks like on the south side, there's not a required buffer, but it looks like they have hedgerows or some kind of heavy.
Yes, right. With that, you know, that was just.
So they might.
The landscaping that they chose to.
They might want to do that same thing back up on the north, right?
They may, I mean, I can inquire as to what more detailed plans they might have, but in general, they're just, we're looking to have the requirement removed.
So the foliage that you want to remove is all bamboo?
I don't know what else might be in there, it's just kind of a mess. And they wanted to, they wanted to be able to treat it as the rest of their property.
Right, I understand, we typically don't want, do we remove buffers if we don't understand why they were imposed? That's the, is that the aerial?
Yeah, it's just an aerial, just the bird side view. To give you a sense of, everything's ornamental in this neighborhood, clearly.
We don't have bamboos.
No, no restrictions yet, yeah.
It is primarily bamboo in there.
Strange, it's an invasive, invasive species. Well, I mean, I think that we could reduce the buffer, take it, take it down to, what, 10 feet?
10 feet, or you could ask that they, maybe, or you put up some type of hedgerow or something to.
Yeah, right, exactly, some.
Might be better.
Something like that, you know, if the restriction were eliminated completely, subject to a condition where we provide some kind of a landscape buffer along the property line, that would be fine.
Okay, I think that's fair enough. Is everybody okay with that?
Something that they, obviously, you would require that they maintain it, but obviously, something that they can.
I know, I know. We, it's not, it's not, the town code doesn't require it as an invasive species, but we should say, remove the bamboo. I mean, I don't know if it's coming from you, or it's coming from your neighbor, because the rhizomes go right under fencing, goes right.
Yes, they do.
Goes under concrete, under roadways, everything.
Well, they're gonna get rid of all of it, except they're going to then install, like, a barrier or a perimeter thing, so they'll get rid of the bamboo.
Something to maintain some privacy from.
We're not gonna issue the resolution today, so what we'll do is, now that they know, I'll prepare something for the next time, I'll drive some language, and we'll.
Good. Fair enough, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Good to see you all.
Thank you, good to see you. So we're, Flying Point Road, 14 Flying Point Road. Page 41.
Does it say an action deadline to Jackie?
Oh, let's see.
It says.
It says action deadline, and we don't have a report.
No.
In the packet. Was there some trouble with Minitrack this, this week?
The large, the document size, for some reason, is like cramming it.
Yeah.
So the more we add, the worse it is.
Right, well, maybe, maybe there's got a way to figure out the maps that are included, because when they come in really small, it's of no value to us.
Yeah.
So if it reduces the size of a file, think about that.
We're short.
Do you have another one?
All right, 14 Flying Point, supposed two-lot subdivision, located in CR60, zoning district, only within the Yag overlay district. Size-wise, it's 2.8, a 2.08 acre lot.
Can you give us a map? We have the text, we need a visual.
Is there a reason why this monitor is not being used?
Jackie, this is the one where they already built the houses.
Oh, right, right.
Okay, 14 Flying Point Road. So the pre-application considers action on the property located in CR60, as we mentioned. The predominant land use class in this area is residential, single-family dwellings. And south of there is a Hampton Business Only District. The applicant's requested the two-lot subdivision of proposed lot one, which contains 26,154 square feet, and proposed lot two, which contains 64,113.3 square feet. This application's been before the board a couple times, they were before the ZBA.
Make it larger. It's impossible to see.
Yeah, that's why I was hoping if we, if it was closer, I'd be able to see it.
There you are. That's good, Jeff, so.
Let me just rotate it.
So this is the only one to see, okay. So just make the, the maps as large as you can, so we can see them. There we go, okay.
Try to squeeze everything in there. Okay, so this application has been before the ZBA for approval, special use permit, to allow the relocation of what is now designated as the Diamond Family Farmhouse. They received Town Board landmarks, historic landmark designation as such. They are now before our board to complete the subdivision application process. They are also given ZBA approval for lot area and lot width variances, as long as front, side yard, and accessory structure setbacks. I won't just, to bear you all the reading material here, I won't read off every single item, but on page three in the report, you could see everything that was approved by the zoning board.
So there are various, oh, wow.
As part of.
This is that, that property.
Correct, the Diamond House.
Just, just north of the application we had for the welding people?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
It's across the street.
Immediately north of it, yes.
But they're.
Across the street.
Yes, but they, there's the budding property on, on the corner of Flying Point Road and County Route 39. The welding people were wanting to put.
Correct, no, you're absolutely correct.
I'm verbalizing what I'm now remembering, because I was thinking this was on the other side of the highway.
Ah, okay, no, no, you're absolutely correct. As far as the application's concerned.
So can you just go over the, has the ZVA issued these variances?
Yes.
So just briefly, what are they?
Sure. So the ZVA granted for the principal front yard setback, 60 feet worth, 80 feet is required.
Okay.
Principal rear yard setback, 62.8, where 100 feet is required. And that's primarily for the historically, the historical landmark, the Diamond Family Farmhouse. For an accessory side yard setback of 22.4, where 30 feet is required, and that's for the proposed pool house. For an accessory side yard setback of 24.8 inches, where 30 feet is required, for the proposed detached garage. And now on proposed Lot 2, the principal front yard setback, 60 feet, where 80 feet is required, and a principal rear yard setback of 69.4 inches, where 100 feet is required for the proposed dwelling.
And that's the new house that's being built?
Correct, that's essentially built, yes.
Jeff, do you have an aerial of the new?
I don't, I don't have an aerial of the new house, no.
Okay, so it's mostly setback relief?
Essentially, setback relief, correct. When we proceed, there's a bunch more.
Well, we don't know, we don't need the details out there, mostly setbacks.
Sure, sure.
What we do, it just, you know, I'll come up and I'll.
No, no, go ahead.
I have the ZVA with this and I started.
Yes, yes, please.
You know, this was one, the historic structure was being preserved, relocated, and as part of that, they did a two-lot subdivision, which required a whole bunch of variances, both to create the undersized lots, and then also mostly for the redevelopment of that new vacant property with all sorts of variances and the rest of it. And they granted the variances, and they, I believe, started construction and everything also.
Yeah, well, that's the wrong, when I remembered what it was, all of this mixed, because the, the goal was to protect, to, the house didn't get torn down, that it was landmarked and maintained.
Correct.
So the variances are making it economically viable for the owner.
So again, this application was left for the board for a public hearing February 9th, 2023, and ended with a 10-day written comment period. No written comments were received. Application was also referred to fire prevention. You can have their comments listed, nothing out of the ordinary was recommended. Obviously, this was also sent back to the Landmark Historic Review Board as part of this application. They reiterated the process in which they essentially designated this as a landmark. And then, of course, engineering had comments, they're recommending three-inch drain. They're also recommending that final plans meet design requirements of the town of South Hampton, that pertains to the subdivision, and of course, to engineering and stormwater management. They are also asking that there's an existing hedge, a row of hedges that should be removed that's currently located within the town right-of-way. Some recommendations I've added as part of the review was one particular comment from the Landmark Historic Review Board, which, which essentially was requesting that the historic house, specifically that lot, be maintained, opened for public visibility, and for any vehicular, anyone passing by via vehicle can enjoy the restoration of that historic house. So I added that as a recommendation, and whether or not the board would like to include that as part of this report as well. Obviously, compliance with all of the ZVA zoning setbacks. And finally, final application must be, must includes health department approval, application fee, and obviously, all requisite materials associated with.
What about a landscaping plan?
So we can include a landscaping plan. This is, the landscaping plan, I'm not sure how we want to go about it. The project itself was given special permit to essentially build and construct the new lot and obviously restore, restore the Diamond House itself. The project itself is, for the most part, I would say 90% complete. There is no representative here that can add to that.
Well, at least we can review a landscaping plan.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I'll make a recommendation.
And then my other question is, do landmarks want some kind of plaque designation to say that this is a historic house? I mean, how would anybody know driving by?
Yeah, that wasn't recommended in their response, it wasn't part of the comments. But I agree, I agree generally with landmarks, we do.
Yeah. Who's representing this application?
This is represented by P.W. Grocer, engineering.
And no one's here, right?
No.
Have they seen the report?
They have.
And no comments?
No comments.
Okay. Any other comments on the board? Okay, I'll adjourn the motion to approve the pre-application report. By George, second by Tom, all in favor. Posed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Kim Lester, number six.
Page 44 in the packet?
There's nothing in the packet.
These reports didn't make it in, yeah. Got the right number?
You did?
Yeah.
Take two, they're free.
All right. All right, so this proposed project is located at 17 Allison Lane, Hamlet to Hampton Bayes, zoning district RWB, also located within the high priority water quality area, also a New York State archeological sensitive area, as well as a wetlands inventory. Site plan itself is for an off-season dry boat storage yard for approximately, or specifically more so, 22 boats in a predetermined area of 11,964 square feet. The property is, has a pre-existing, pre-existing single-family one-story dwelling, is also located 100 feet from the wetlands boundary, and does not include any onsite or maintenance of said-stored boats. We held pre-submission conference on March 9th, 2023, no comments were received, and we ended it with a 30-day written comment period. As far as the full site plan application, which would include lighting, landscaping, engineering information, if applicable, this site does not propose any structures, but delineating boat storage area for dry boat storage. There was a ZVA decision regarding this to include an additional use, as there was an existing, pre-existing single-family dwelling onsite, that, that use included the requirement or the use of the boat storage specifically on the subject property, where generally we require one use per 40,000 square feet of lot area. The zoning board granted them the second use. In addition to that, the zoning board also granted them principal rear yard setback of 20 feet, where 50 feet is required. And that's essentially the transitional yard from the northern portion of the property, as well as the front yard off of Allison, Allison Lane. Some review elements, we're going to require the applicant to pay attention and essentially comply with all the zoning requirements, the zoning, ZVA decision requirements upon full site planification. Again, the site has the two uses, the single-family dwelling, as well as the off-season dry boat storage. SECRE was also, this is an illicit action under SECRE, and the planning board actually assumed lead agency and issued a NEG deck as part of the resolution July 14th, 2022. Again, the site's to remain without any onsite maintenance, repair, storage of liquids, parts, et cetera. This property also, or this project, will include a wetlands permit upon full site plan, full site plan review. As far as landscaping is concerned, I believe during our discussion, we wanted to make sure there is some delineation between the boatyard itself and the neighboring properties. So we're requesting some landscaping along the property line, the northerly property line, as well as the southerly property line. I'd visited the site myself, and they do have some pretty mature 20, 30-foot sized trees off of Allison, so the boatyard area itself is pretty screened, but the board can add more screening if they find it needs it. Parking was not necessarily delineated on this site plan. We are requesting and recommending 12 parking spots along the northerly portion of the lot to maintain at minimum 10 feet. So I'll change to 20 to 10 feet. Just to accommodate any storage patrons dropping off, and also to maintain parking for the existing single-family dwelling as well, separate from the off-season boat storage use. There is no signage that's proposed on this particular project, but any signage that is proposed, we're recommending that they bring it to the board, of course, for approval. Lighting, we are actually requesting that no lighting be onsite, as there's no repairs, there's no maintenance of any sort. That's supposed to be actually done onsite, so lighting for us wouldn't necessarily be a requirement. And that's about it. Any questions from the board or recommendations?
What's the date of the wetland boundary?
The date of wetlands boundary is May 8th, 2022.
So it's still compliant, right?
Yes, three years.
And how wide is that driveway?
The driveway, as of right now, I believe is 20 feet wide in width.
Is that sufficient to bring in boats on a trailer?
On a trailer, yeah.
They're smaller boats, right?
Smaller boats, yeah, because 22 feet, 22 boats in totality is what's permitted on the site.
Is that wider?
Yeah. I was going to ask about the parking, because it seems, I don't recall parking being discussed in previous.
No, it wasn't.
And that seems kind of, to me, it seemed excessive for a use where, you know, people will be coming to drop off boats, 22 boats, 12 parking spots. I mean, that's almost saying that there's going to be a lot of people appearing at the same time to.
Sure.
Pick up the boats.
No, absolutely.
And for a smaller area like that, if you're looking at paving and parking, it seems a little bit excessive to me.
I agree.
I agree, yeah. That was going to be one of my comments. I mean, it would seem to me that the boats are going to have to be ushered in, because I'm sure they're going to be tail to nose. And so it's not like everybody's going to come at once. Row 1's going to be here on Monday, and row 2, maybe Monday afternoon.
I agree.
You know, I mean, that just seems, I'm not a boat guy.
I mean, maybe a couple of spots.
Is there a code requirement, one boat equals clear?
Well, you can, the, you do have.
The code is that if you think the use doesn't need as much parking, you find that it will need its own parking requirement. So we can definitely put that in, it's, it's a section of the code. So a couple spaces?
And maybe it was gravel parking and not like.
Yeah, more informal than any form of parking, for sure.
Okay, so for like three or four places, spaces?
Yeah.
You could just say that, Jeff, and then we can work on the, the number when the site plan comes.
Okay.
So I just had a comment in reading several articles, the shrink wrap materials that are used in boatyards now are really not being recycled properly and causing tremendous problems, because they don't break down, they're not.
Yeah, like single-use bags.
Right, and so maybe we need to add a sentence in here, what would you want to say, environmental handling of the, of the shrink wrap materials. You would, you probably have some words for that, Greg.
I wish I did.
Yeah, because it's, it's a big issue.
Right.
Responsible, responsible disposal of.
Right, well, these are also smaller boats that are going to be trailering in, and oftentimes these boats have boat covers as opposed to the shrink wrap. I'm not saying that these boats aren't.
Right, we don't know.
They may also be taken away from the site, shrink wrapped, before, before being put into the water and then.
Right, because I don't, I don't believe the site has the ability or.
Is there a representative here?
Yes. But to your point, it's a problem.
It's a big problem, yeah.
Some boat dealerships now are shipping boats with reusable shrink wraps, they have to off-train. So if it's, let's say, a 23-foot boat, you can loosen it, take it off, follow.
And reuse it, right.
It's like a boat cover.
Yeah, yeah.
Susanna Herman and consultants for the applicants. First, regarding the parking, I don't think there's any anticipated need for parking. This would be more like valet-type system where the, this is very informal. People would rent a space, they would come in, the owner of the property would help them place the boat where it needs to go, and then the owner would drive away, leaving the boat on the trailer. So I don't see a need for more than maybe one or two gravel areas for someone to leave a truck while, while this process is happening. I don't even, I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah, we have to accommodate.
Very minimal. We, we have no interest in taking on additional costs for any formalized parking, but a small gravel area for maybe one or two vehicles might be appropriate. I don't think anything more than that would be desirable or appropriate. Rather, put the money in landscaping. There's a lot of very mature vegetation along the road. The north and south sides could probably use a little additional landscaping, so that's fine. With respect to boat shrink wrap, I don't have any particular knowledge of this, but I would assume they would be, what, these are smaller boats, you know, 20 feet, 25 feet, no more than that, which I think mostly would have a cover.
Okay, but if there is, I think we'd put in a phrase that there'd be responsible disposal.
That's fine.
Of one-time shrink wrap.
Some, some will come in, the shrink wrap.
I'm sure some will.
What I, what I would recommend is just not allowing shrink wrapping.
On-site.
On-site, or, or remove, removal of onsite. Plus, you don't want people on your lot doing that, because it becomes a liability.
Right, right. And there's no access to put the boats in or take them out of the water at this location either.
They just pick up the boat and go?
Take them down the road, yes.
Okay, so, any other comments?
I think that's it.
Great. Any other comments from the board? Okay, so, motion to approve the Kim Lester boat storage pre-act report.
Motion.
By Gloria.
Second.
Second by Craig, all in favor. Posed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you. Anthony. Maple Residence, 13 Maple Avenue.
This should be page 51 in the packet, and I believe everything should be there, but you know.
You know, it should say it. We need the action deadline in role first.
Okay, well, it is first, it does say today, because that should be like, okay. So this is a two-lot subdivision, 13 Maple Avenue and Hampton Bay, R20 zoning, with a smidgen of the corner of the property in the highway business zone. This is for final conditional approval. You'll see from the map here, it's not only clearing overlay districts, existing residents in the front lot, and then second lot in the back. Pretty straightforward at this point. So I have a resolution. So I have a resolution here. On the first, is the resolution in the packet?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah is right.
Thank you, Anthony.
It's a miracle. So on the first page of the resolution, we go through the findings. This is a type-two action under SECRE. We did the final application. We deemed it complete in December. We waived the final hearing with 30-day written comment period. Just to note, because of the delay from December to now, was I noticed that it wasn't picked up in the pre-app, I didn't do the pre-app, but the lot width for the second lot was off by like a foot and a half. And so I went to panic mode, because the last thing I wanted to do was send an applicant to the ZBA when they had Health Department approval. So that was for the delay, and what we're gonna do is we just put a condition here that the, one of the map changes is fix the lot line instead of going to the ZBA. So we adopted a pre-application report for this in June of 2021, and the map is in agreement with that report. Suffolk County Department of Health Services issued approval for this back in August of last year, and it's not subject to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. Town engineer came back recommending a three-inch rainfall, and then he puts in this general requirement now, meeting the design requirements as pertains to the subdivision regs and stormwater management. Conservation Board came.
Excuse me, what is this that's added now? Is this sort of a general?
It is a general thing.
But it doesn't say anything. I mean, it's not specific.
It's not specific. So to be quite honest, it is in the resolution, right, because he's made the comment, but really what we're gonna require is that the three-inch drainage, you know, goes in the covenant. Beyond that, the final plans, you know, saying that they have to conform to the code of the town of Southampton is just sort of.
You might ask him why he's including that.
I will, that's a good question. But he says in this.
It's gonna be the retention of everything onsite during construction, after construction, everything that pertains to that.
Right, I guess it is. His last statement then says there's no site engineering involved, or no requirements by this office. So I get what you're saying, Jeff, I gotta figure that out. Conservation Board came back. Obviously, this is all subject to the IA systems now. They're recommending a wooded buffer along the northerly property boundary, and I'll go, I'll go there with you in a few seconds. Fire, Office of Fire Prevention came back, nothing out of the ordinary. They have public water and hydrants. And then the Highway Department recommends that a tip-up be provided to mitigate water runoff. That's fine.
What's a tip-up? Tip-up, whatever.
It was the first time, if you could explain, I tried to look it up.
It's kind of the asphalt curbing kind of you see on a regular road. There's sometimes now they're adding kind of a little.
Curve to it.
Two or three-inch high or four-inch-high bit of asphalt, a curved bit of asphalt on the edge.
Just to contain the water so it flows along.
Just to keep the water on the road.
Yep.
It's not really a formal curb, that's why they don't call it a curb, but that's what it is.
Their drainage?
Asphalt that's about that high, right on the edge of the road, that keeps a channel.
That would be for the driveway?
I have not heard of it going over the driveway, across the driveway.
I didn't really get into the recommendation there, and I say this only because when a person goes in for a building permit, it also goes to.
Highway Department.
Highway Department, and then at that time, they do their, you know, in engineering, and they say what the stormwater. It was new to me, too.
This is a knowledge question.
They may, they may be recommending it along a driveway to keep the water from running down the driveway.
It sounds like they keep it on-site.
Right.
Problem with those is they get handed by the snowplows, and then you have no.
We're lucky we didn't have any snow.
Yeah. Fire District had no specific recommendations, and the same thing from the Trails Advisory Board. So I recommend approval. Final map revisions, again, adjust the lot line for Lot 2 to meet the minimum lot width of 120 feet. Add a notation on the map regarding covenants and restrictions. The postal addresses for each of the lots have to go on the map, and they need to remove the building envelopes and any proposed structures. As for buffers, so this is what, you know, the Conservation Board is recommending along this northerly property boundary. Now, a couple things, I don't have a problem with it, and the applicant said, you know, they don't have a problem with it either. This is highway business zone. I will say, when we did the site plan, there is a transition yard buffer that was required as part of this commercial site plan, which is really where the burden of providing a buffer to an unrelated land use should occur. But there is a 20-foot setback for principal structures for houses on this lot, so if you think the extra 20 feet would be good to protect from the adjacent commercial use, we could absolutely put it in there. That's entirely at this point's discretion.
Kind of lines up with some of the greenery on the other lots, so you have a green corridor.
Yeah, I've never gone back to the end of that parking lot to see what the greenery looks like.
Gotcha. And there's some nice trees back there, so I think a 20-foot buffer, it's outside of the building envelope, so I don't have an issue with that.
Is that a zoning line?
That's a zoning line, so a small portion of this property's in the highway business zone.
So that's described, right, in the description?
They can have a lemonade stand there.
I do say in there it's split zone somewhere in the description. So what I will do then is an E, I'll just, I'll note that a northerly property boundary, a 20-foot wide non-disturbance buffer, and that's good, it's adjacent to commercial. Payment of the park, payment of the park fee, $2,500. The covenants and restrictions, so no further subdivision of any of the lots, no lot line modifications without Planning Board approval, no new utility poles or overhead utilities for Lot 2. Obviously, the front lot is not vacant, so whatever's there is there. Six is the retention of the stormwater runoff and erosion control during and after construction, so there, you know, that's where we're dealing with this, making sure that everything is contained on-site, which is where this tip-off may rear its head during the review. Let's see, compliance with the driveway standards, submission of the draft declaration of covenants and restrictions, a mortgage consent if it's applicable, title certification, title of the town attorney approval of the documents, the final maps, four mile hours paper prints, and then submission, and then filing of the maps within 62 days.
I don't see any reference to split zoning. You wanna double-check it?
Okay.
Because it should be in the description.
Yeah, 100%. Yeah. Oh, you're right, it doesn't say anything. I will fix that. I'll put that in the description.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, I think, pretty straightforward.
Who's representing this?
The gentleman.
Do you have any questions, or?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, a motion to approve the, is this a pre-app report?
The final, yeah, the final.
Final.
Final, yes, action deadline on Maple Residence. Motion by Craig, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Post-extensions, five in favor, two absent. Louis, Anthony Louis Road, planned residential development, I have to, let me give.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking a question, I'm sorry.
Formerly the hills at Southampton, and the address is 149 Old Country Road and 149 Jagger Path.
But it's Louis Road.
Yeah.
That's the address that's on here, so is that incorrect?
I just think it's interesting.
Oh, the address is Jagger Road, you mean?
Yeah.
Huh.
You skipped, that's another address. It's Louis Road, number eight.
Am I reading something?
Yeah, there's another, that's possibly.
Oh, yeah.
Here, across.
The address is north and east of Louis Road.
Oh, that's eight. So where is that? I'm on the next page, I turn it over, and there's no address.
No, I don't see.
General and north.
Let me, I'm also.
All right, let me correct the address so that we have a correct thing in the minutes. Generally, north and east of Louis Road, in the vicinity of Spiny Road, and extending north beyond Sunrise Highway. There is no formal address for this?
There's so many copies that I would.
But I mean, the Louis, the Louis Road planned residential development has no specific address?
That's the way we've been describing it the entire time.
I think we should get an address.
You can get an address from main site.
Yeah. All yours, Anthony.
Okay, so.
Is it in the packet?
There's nothing in the packet.
Okay.
I'm gonna actually come up there, I just wanted to.
Please.
Reorient the Planning Board here. If the board might recall, as part of the approval, there was road abandonments that had to happen. What you have is to the east here, I believe, is what was the Estates at.
Cracking.
Okay, the old file map of the Estates at East Quogue, which sits over here. This is where development rights are coming and being transferred, and this will all be preserved. And then it's Quogue Estates on the other old file maps, which are obviously closer here to where the development is going. As part of the approval, we asked the applicant to do the, you know, they have to submit the road abandonment information, all the certificate of abandonment, in this case, map with all the information and the necessary legal documents, like we do in any other, in any other case. This was very helpful, Wayne ruined for the applicant this year. So on the Quogue Estates, which is the one that's closer to the development, they created a map showing what they own, and then they very nicely show on each of them where they're abandoning the roads where they can abandon them. If they own on one side, they could abandon half.
Half.
If they own on both sides, they could, they could do otherwise. And you could see, Wayne and I spent a lot of time, there's a whole bunch of, you know, things going on here. So there was one map for that. And then to the east, which is the Estates at Quogue, and that has multiple sections, they also produced a second map that identifies the lots that they own, and then it shows grayed out where they're doing.
Past the road.
The road abandonments. So.
And what about the property within the development where you have the old file maps?
That's the first map.
That was the first.
That's the first one, that's in the.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one, Anthony's giving you the formal names of the underlying subdivision map, but this, this larger one is all what's known as the Parlato Properties.
The Parlato.
And this is in, you can see where Spiny Road goes in each section, but that goes north to south all the way.
Okay.
Across to Sunrise. And so here are, you'll see some of the.
Couple of old file maps there, right?
Yeah, the eight or so out parcels.
Yeah.
They're in the map.
Where are they, Anthony?
Well, it's really anything that's not gray, so you can see the white part, you know, here. So you can see their, their access on the road has not been abandoned or taken away.
So you still haven't found these people, right, who have these old file maps?
We, I can tell you, we have addresses and names, and I've written letters and talked to people, and just like old file maps, the origin of their title goes back to the early 1900s. Families left them to families, heirs, and in some cases, even if they wanted to, the cost of clearing title is more than the value of the property. So when we get involved, the first problem is, is who has the authority to set? We had one family where we were talking to two, three siblings, and while we were talking, two of them passed away. And now there's other families. So, and then there's others that just don't respond.
Right, okay, I just wanted to see if there was an update.
And, and the key then, the reason why we have this map, is we wanted to make sure that it was in every resolution that we did for this, is that an out parcel, regardless of whether the lots can be developed, still has to have the, even if they're paper roads.
And Spiny Road is the.
Estates.
There's no.
There's that question, sorry, just because it came up for the town board last Tuesday, someone was questioning what the plan was with that, and there's, there's no plan to have it be anything other than it is right now.
Estates.
And it's a state road? Did you say, what's?
The town road.
The town road.
Laid out as a town road in the early 1930s or 40s, and then when the Sunrise High, it was only a dirt road, providing access all the way from Louis Road all the way to Flanders Road. And then when the sunrise highway went through, the town barricaded the portion, and there was no access granted by the state when it took, did the taking of the Sunrise Highway. And it barricaded that end, and the town also barricaded both ends where there was unimproved. And if you go, for example, Flanders Road, and you go down that little bit of Spiny Road, you'll see a barricade there that was placed by the town. There was a barricade until about a month ago on this end, for some reason Superintendent of Highway took it out.
And that was originally barricaded because of the illegal dumping that was going on up Spiny Road.
And the ATVs.
And the line building. The ATVs, and the partying, and everything else, yeah.
So what, how we normally.
But it's still, but Spiny Road is still a town road that could be used.
Yes, by the public, for walking.
Yes.
100%. Yeah, this is not part of the original touchdown.
And so what we normally do, road abandonments, we usually just have one little road abandonment, Joe Gazes most of the time, and we have no objection. What I did here in the resolution, so, you know, the first whereas just talks about what the project is, like we've been doing. Then the third whereas, as part of the aforementioned subdivision site plan approvals, the applicant was required to submit the final road abandonment maps and certificates of abandonment for the underlying old file maps and streets with necessary abandonment title certifications. And then the next whereas, on March 16th, we received this information, just so the board knows, I have stacks of certificates and meets and bounds descriptions and title stuff all, you know, all over the place, so they submitted that, and I went through it, and everything's moving forward to Christine. We reviewed everything, I find that we have everything that we need. So the first resolve refers to the abandoned map of Quogue Estates, which is the first map here. And so I referenced this map, and the road abandonments and the lots in there. I date when the map was filed, and we say no objection to the road abandonments on this map, subject to the town attorney reviewing and approving all the necessary.
So is that the Parlato?
This is not the Parlato piece.
The other one is.
The other one is. I'm sorry, I'm a couple of years old map, you know, name.
Anthony, the resolution might be helpful, just put it AKA Parlato or whatever, just to the.
I will do that.
Right.
And then the second resolution is the same thing for this map. This map, this has a lot more in there, is because it wasn't just Quogue Estates, Section 1, it was Estates at Quogue, Section 1, Section 2, Section 3. So I listed all of the maps that were part of this, and again, no objection subject to all the legal documents being reviewed and approved by the town attorney's office.
So, again, Wayne, you talked about you get all kinds of outreach, and there's all kinds of things going on here. So as long as there's due to have been shown, is that enough qualification then to abandon the road?
Well, we're a gang of, leaving paper streets still there.
So there is access.
You know, so they have their so-called paper streets, but we also have, as this board requested, and the Health Department requested, in the future, when the map is actually filed, we have a covenant where we're offering to dedicate, I mean, to grant aneasement to an out parcel if they were ever approved by this board for development under the old file map regulations. Now, none of those parcels, at least in our development section, are large enough to do that, and let alone in close proximity to open road utilities, where I don't suspect that you will ever do that, and I think that was in your findings. But that's just another sign. The other thing Anthony didn't mention is there was an abandonment in the last couple of years, where you did one, and actually, that map for Dan Gabay, G-A-B-A-Y, and he ultimately abandoned his lot and part of the street, and then did a development rights certificate with the town. And then at the end of this map, right in the corner here next to the railroad, you approved an abandonment of portions of the streets, Bay Lane and Dunham Boulevard for Joe Gazza. So there's been abandonments already of the streets and lots by this board in these maps.
So Wayne, do you think you can get an address for this development? So that we don't have to.
Well, as Claire said, there's 178 different parcels, each of which have a street address.
Right, but no.
So which one do you want to use?
But your, but your development, the Louis Road, this.
Yeah, which one do you want to use?
Whatever you want to use, it's your choice.
We'll figure out one. We'll figure out.
I'm gonna reference, in this resolution with the change there, parenthetically.
AKA Parlato.
Parlato and cracking, or whatever it is, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, motion, motion to, motion to adopt?
I give you my sympathy.
By George, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Post extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. It was labor.
American Legion?
Claire.
Hi.
American Legion?
Yeah, I think there's someone here.
Number, page 59.
Yep. So this is the property, it's on Pogwog Avenue in Hampton Bay, it's the existing American Legion. Can you see the aerial up there? The cursor, there's a small addition proposed. It's about 760 square feet. It's mostly for, to install an elevator, ADA access to the building, and some storage in the basement. But it has to have site plan, there's never been a site plan on this project. I am recommending expedited with no public hearing, but it is a building that's over 75 years old, so we do have to get landmarks and ARB to, to weigh in on it.
Do we have a site plan?
Sure. And the next thing is the site plan. Zoom out a little bit.
When we did that, you know, that monument at the front of the building, which I did when I was in the, we didn't, I guess there wasn't a site plan done for that?
No.
Really?
Yeah. Nope. Not at that time.
The good old days.
It wasn't that long ago.
So this is the, the addition, right here, it's 760 square feet, so. I don't know if there's anybody here for that. Oh, hi, how are you? Did you want to give a summary? Or just, we're just going to deem it complete and do the referrals. That's my recommendation, with no public hearing. Maybe a 10-day written comment period? Does that sound appropriate? Okay. Any questions on your part? Great. So I do have a resolution to that effect in the, I'll just fill in the dates, providing the 10-day written comment period.
You said it's an elevator, to construct an elevator? Is it ADA compatible and?
That's what I understand, but they, we can, just identify yourself for the record, please.
Derek, you want to be architect? So the, the existing, the long structure that's immediately behind there, that's where the actual hall is, where they have all the events that, that supports the legion. And so it's, it's about a half a story below grade, so there's no way for them to get in and to get down to the event level. So we're proposing to do, on grade level, to have an entrance that has a small lobby, bathroom, and then you're going to go down to the event level, so.
So there's an additional bathroom?
Is there additional bathroom too?
Yeah, we're, we're just, we're putting, just right at, yeah, immediately at the entrance.
What about?
What about?
The health departments and?
So we, we went through the review process with them, because basically this is not a habitable space. It's, it's a lobby in an elevator. We're providing an additional bathroom, just because the, it's just convenient that way to have it in a lobby. But because we're not adding any habitable space, then it wouldn't require, it's not increasing any kind of requirements that we would have to go through a health department process.
Do you have something in writing from the health department?
Yeah, we have something from, from them when we researched this a year ago.
Good. Claire, you need to get that.
Okay. Do you want a referral to the health department? Or you just want to get something in writing?
Yeah, if they're putting in a bathroom, I mean, you know, this is not an exception.
Right. Okay.
And the point is to make this accessible to people that currently can't access that?
Right. Some of the, you know, some of the veterans are getting older and having difficulty to get down there, and then when they have certain events, they're limited because people find out that they don't have that access, and it's just, they're, they're losing revenue from that, so.
Good.
Okay. So I'm recommending deem it complete and for referrals, including the health department.
And 10-day written comment period.
10-day written comment period, yes.
Okay. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor? Post extensions, five in favor, two absent.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now with CD access.
Okay, Southampton Country Day Camp, page 62, plus the reports that Claire did.
So I'll just summarize.
Please.
Jackie and Tom and I went out on April 19th to the sites, and provided by email yesterday, some pictures that Jackie had taken of the site, of various portions of the site, including sports courts and, and some other items. And, and then also, we took a note of, you know, looking at the site plan, the conditions, what was completed and what hadn't been completed so far. So of notable, there was about five things that were more notable on the site. Do you want me just to summarize that?
Please.
Okay. The first item really was the, that there was supposed to be a fence on the north side, and you actually can see it even in the aerial where the location is.
Do you have the photos?
And the photo, I can.
You can see it.
Open it up. Oh, actually, it's a Word document, so let me just. Word. Ah, why am I, Lewis Road in the brain? Sorry. Thank you.
That's because of Wayne.
Exactly. Pictures, here we go. So this is of the pool. There was a temporary tents support structure there, these are the playhouses, the playgrounds, or playhouses, the playground and the sports courts, the sports courts. And this is the fence. This is the fence that continued along the west side, which was actually supposed to stop another, well, the sand court there. But it's, it was.
Goes all the way down.
Yeah.
All wraps around.
Exactly. So it was constructed, some kind of white vinyl fence, instead of the original stockade fence. And in a portion of it, the stockade fence was supposed to go on a berm. It was three years ago, and I, my memory is terrible, I'm not quite sure why, playing board felt strongly about that, but.
Sound attenuation.
Yeah.
To, to help ameliorate some of the, the sound.
Yeah, that was my memory too.
And that was a condition of the site plan.
And.
So that is the one thing that's.
Just to make it echo.
Yeah, that's the one thing that's inconsistent with the site plan. Everything else is a, is a work in progress, or, you know, can be rectified on the site. So, but that is the one thing that's, so that was number one. Number two was that the area is being used, it was supposed to be revegetated. Number three is that there was supposed to be an area that was revegetated, and it's been, there's a sports court there now. The same thing of, for number four, the same thing, different sports court. And then number five is that there's some additional playhouses, which you saw in the pictures on the sites.
So, I wasn't there, but what I'm hearing is, it sounds like, not that it's not finished, but there are things that are, have been done that were not identified on the original site plan. So they either have to update the site plan, or they have to update what the facility looks like, because there's an inconsistency.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, yes.
Yeah. So the fencing is really critical. We spent a lot of time specifying that, talking about it. So Wayne, have you been to the site?
I have, and I have Tom Clark here with the director, and the property here with us to answer some of this.
Yeah, no, he was, he was not there. Some, another woman was there with her cell phone.
Okay. So let's, I just want to go backtrack a little, particularly for members who weren't here, but in 2020, just before COVID, the site plan, planning board approved the site plan. About several months later in 2021, the actual plans were signed, and this board signed, signed the plans. Of course, no work really could be done for a good year and a half or so. A year ago, in April of 2022, we came before the board, and we're here because the section of the code that says you have to complete all your site improvements within two years of your site plan approval is expired. So we came to the board in April 22 of 22, and asked for an additional two years. The board chose not to give us two years, chose to give us only one year. And so we're back for an additional extension. However, before that was requested, we, we were asked to give you an update of what work was being completed, and, which we did, and then you asked for an inspection. And so you've highlighted some things that you saw in the inspections. First and foremost, as Claire has indicated, and I think the board will acknowledge, that this is a work in progress. Just like any site plan you approve, at some point, before we get the final CO, we'll have to comply with whatever's shown on the site plan, or as Gloria just indicated, or come back and ask for amendments to the site plan, which is not something that is unusual, you do it routinely. That being said, you identified some areas which I've discussed with my client briefly, particular temporary tents that are added or that are not shown on the site plan. If they're going to remain, then they need to come back and revise that. So we'll go back and examine those. With respect to the fence, as Claire just indicated, we all needed to go back, and I asked, as you know, there was a final environmental impact statement, there was a noise study, and then there was engineering review. And we went back briefly, and I asked David Wortman from VHB, and he needs to go back and pull these files. His first response was that the issue of noise mitigation by virtue of a fence or a berm wasn't even identified in the draft environmental impact statement, nor was it identified in your finding statements. And I think the fence came about later, after the, you know, you did the finding statement, then the zoning board acted, and then you came back for site plan approval. I think it was at that time, the board wanted to see a fence along the northerly property line. And so just to give you, this is Major's Path, this is the northerly property line. And a six-foot stockade fence was shown to run along the entire property line, and then where the slope changed, it was to veer out in this direction. So about 445 feet is a six-foot fence directly on the property line, no change in grade or otherwise. Then the fence was to go in this location, which was essentially on the top of the hill. And I think it was the board's direction that six-foot fence would help block noise. The issue of the berm, and the issue of a fence on top of a berm, it is shown on the plan, but there's, what I could see, nothing that any directive on the part of this board that we have to put a fence on top of a berm. But more importantly, as the building department, when they issued the building permit for that fence, indicated, you cannot have a fence that exceeds the total maximum height on top of a berm. So that means if you have a two-foot berm, you can have a four-foot fence, or three and three, or whatever the number is. The point is the berm and the fence can't exceed six feet.
Can't have variance.
Yeah, but this board could not approve that.
No, we don't do variances.
In which case, you did, you didn't direct it, nor could you direct something that is not complying. So I think what happened here, first of all, the berm was not because of noise or anything else. The berm was required by Tom Houghton, because this is the area where the field is, and the slope, he wanted drainage pools at the end of that field, and he wanted the berm to make sure the water was caught and put into the drainage pools. I think what happened after that was, the engineer just put the fence on top of the berm. And nobody looked at it until now, except for when we applied, and the building department says you can't do that. They gave us a building permit, they gave us a certificate of compliance, amazingly, but the point is, the fence, we clearly recognize that the fence is not the stockade fence that was requested, but it is a solid fence. It's of a material that will not be, need maintenance and replacement after a few years. So I think there was extra money spent in that regard. What we're actually here for is the extension in the site plan, so we can continue to get building permits. I would suggest that at least 75 or more percent of all the site improvements have been done, health department, septic systems have been put in the ground. Things that are needed left to be done is the completion, including revegetation of areas that are shown on the plan. But there are permits that we're still looking for, in particular, right now. What prompted all this was a permit request by the building department to put in the gates, as well as some of the changing sheds. But there is other work, such as, you know, the replacement of this building up here, that our client doesn't intend to do at this moment. He'll probably do in the fall, off-season, the next fall. So there are certain things, but as far as the site improvements, the whole plan is to get all those done, related as, to that, except for those portions where those permits haven't been achieved. As far as the fence is concerned, what my suggestion is, is that obviously, before we get final COs, we should resolve that issue. I think both Claire and I need to go back in the record, find out, but certainly I would think the fence, six-foot fence, no one's disputing there should be a six-foot fence there. But the problem is putting the six-foot fence on top of the berm. Neither this board could do it, and I, I would suggest that it should be a futile application to go to the zoning board to ask for a variance when we can comply.
Well, I'm reading page 22. The applicant has stated, "The solid fence with minimal gaps will attenuate the sound. An additional five decibels in additional absorption material would not be of benefit for this application, as there is no concern with sound that may reflect off the solid wood fence back to the activity area and toward the interior of the camp facility. The applicant is proposing a berm in the location of the northern fence, a three-foot berm and a six-foot fence on top of that for a total of nine feet. This will require a variance from the zoning board of appeals, and the planning board supports the variance." So this was written.
Who's that written?
Two years or so ago.
That's the staff report she's reading from.
So, you know, I understand there was COVID and there was an interruption, but that work, at least, that was pretty clear, hasn't been done. Instead, a, a white vinyl fence was installed. And that is not going to do anything for sound attenuation, Wayne.
Well, fence, a solid fence does. You just go on the Sunra, on the LIE, concrete walls are put for sound attenuation. So it.
That's concrete.
It's concrete.
Plastic echoes.
But which way is it echoing?
It's reflecting.
Back towards us.
Well, it's plastic on both sides, and so.
Well, you mean, the noise would be reflected back to.
Wayne, let's, we're going to try to resolve the fence thing, but I could say that this board was pretty clear about, and it's in the staff report, Claire.
So I would just suggest, the question is, what if, what if we were to go to the zoning board and they said no? Then what?
It's up to the zoning board, but we support what we wrote in the, in the, in the report.
Then, then you go back and investigate what else would help, which might be planting, it could be other things. But at the time, the board, this is what the board decided.
Right, tall trees, right.
And it was based upon information provided by the applicant.
Yeah.
So I would agree with that.
So when we went to the site, and I, I'm sorry that you were not there in person, there's a lot of, you, you opened July 1, right?
May 15, May 18.
Is that for the tennis camp portion, or for the summer camp?
Tennis.
Can you come up to the podium?
Yeah, you have to identify yourself too.
You, you can, you can sit here if you like.
Thomas Coffey, director, on-site director at Southampton Country Day Camp.
Okay, so, but the tennis camp has its own entrance, and as, I mean.
Correct.
It almost functions like, and we saw that. Remember that, Tom?
Yes.
The tennis camp itself. The summer camp, where we spent most of the time, opens July 1.
June 26 is the first day of campus.
That means you have even less time to do a lot of open projects. We were particularly taken with the amount of gravel that is in the, around the camp, in the camp, on 40, 50-foot roadways, right off the pool, and no grass. Now, I realize you're going to plant, but you've got less than 60 days to do that, unless you're going to bring in sod. I don't know what your plan is.
No, the idea is hydroseed. You can't start that until the beginning of May anyway. It's too cold currently. The, the grass wants Germany. You can't start that until the beginning of May anyway, it's too cold currently, the grass won't germinate.
So you will have grass in those areas?
So that large field area which abuts that white fence, yes, that will be completely grassed by the time campers arrive on June the twenty-sixth.
Okay. And then, Tom, let's talk about that forty, fifty-foot wide roadway that's gravelled coming in.
Seems like, and I have not studied the site plan, it seemed very wide, the driveways.
It does, it does seem wide.
I don't know if that's what's specified in the plan.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke to Wayne, obviously, we spent the last ten years trying to avoid taking down trees and disturbing the area. I mean, Wayne pointed out that this was an engineering requirement for us to have a wider road inside the property, because we have buses coming in to drop campers off. It's a one-way road. We had squires in Holden, our surveyors, stake the limits of clearing. We then had the Rayner Group of Watermill stake the edge of the roads based on this plan. And then we had South Fork Asphalt, which is a local company that I'm sure you know, carry out the work. So we've used local people to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make sure we stick to the plan. Now, it does, it does look wide. If it is wider than it should be, then that could obviously be rectified, and there will be questions asked of those three local companies that we have contracted to do that.
Can you tell us the width of that? We didn't, we measured some roads, but not that.
We measured between the posts, which the poster, twenty-two.
Yeah, so I mean, it does show on the plan that where those posts are, it is narrow. That's why the gate is there, it's the narrowest point of the road. And then, once you go into the property, it does fan out.
But yeah, Jackie, at that entrance point, and I think it was Danielle or Danielle.
Danielle was there, yes.
She was saying for two buses to be able to line up side by side.
Yeah, it's all based on the engineer, what they wanted. If I'm being completely candid with this board, I did not want to rip down as many trees as we had and have that giant roadway in the property, but that's, that's what we were told we had to do.
Right.
So your engineers would have developed that, right, and our engineers would have reviewed it?
Yep. And Tom Houghton has been, you know, he's visited the property every step of the way this, this off-season, he's probably been there five times. We met with him to do, you know, a pre-construction walkthrough, South Asphalt and Perry Delalio, who I've been quite close with, he's been in constant contact with, with Tom. And obviously, the Rayner Group, the reason we chose the Rayner Group for our sweep inspections and the flagging, is their previous relationship with Tom Houghton.
So you've moved some electric poles as well, or?
PSEG did.
We would like them to have been moved a little bit sooner, but yes, they were moved last.
Internally.
Yeah, we saw that.
So, for example, there were some in the roadway, whatever, so the PSEG came in and they relocated.
There may be a couple more that were going to be moved as.
So the, I don't, I think you were there prior to the new poles being placed, so the new poles are actually in place currently. We're waiting for Optimum, who was supposed to be there. They were there yesterday, hanging up new cable vision wires. They were supposed to be there to take down their old wires, but a few spots of brain stopped them doing that. But PSEG will be moving the existing three poles that you saw in the middle of the roadway prior to the start of the summer.
So you say you opened May twenty-sixth, is that what you said?
June twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth, so you, yeah, okay.
So this will be a seven-day-a-week job for you. My, my first wife ran a summer camp for many years out there, and I helped her, and I'm sure you're going to have seven-day-a-week, the whole rest of the way.
It is not as relaxing as some people would assume.
So what are we doing with the fence? Did we resolve it? We need sound attenuation.
Well, the question is, is we need to go back and, and find a source of that information. And if, if the only choice we have is to go get a variance, then that will take about nine months to obtain. Takes about five months just to get on the agenda now at the zoning board. So there's no way, I can give you a guarantee that the zoning board will do anything for that. But just like any site plan, we have to either take the fence down, or, or get the variance, or come back and get you to change your approval, one way or another, before we get all our final COs.
What about looking at those areas that we wanted berm and fence? Particularly in front of the houses that are there?
That's just this hundred and twenty feet stretch right here.
But of course, the fence, the fence is built all the way around, Claire, right, all the way.
Yeah, it looks like it extends around the west side of the property, too. This is east and west.
Yeah, the fence ended.
This way.
Yeah, it goes all the way around, yeah.
That hundred and twenty, that's where I remember standing there looking, and you could see two or three or four homes, kind of, right over the fence.
So that's the area that we're concerned with, and so.
Along the whole north, one, two, three, four, there's four houses, or five houses. And so the fence started up near Major's Path for four hundred forty-five feet. It's at grade along the property line. And then, when the slope, as you know, that portion slopes down, the board wanted the fence at the top of the hill, not along the property line.
Right.
And so that's where that is. And the berm came about because of the drainage.
Can we do any temporary fencing?
Can you, can you, can you accommodate that? I mean, do you need to go back and do some, revise the plans, to do that kind of fencing that we're asking for?
The stockade fence?
Yeah.
To replace this fence with the stockade fence?
Well, in that particular area for the, where we had indicated it, is that correct?
How high is the berm?
Can I make a suggestion, is that possible?
Well, the berm isn't there yet.
No, the berm was, none of it was put in, Christine, that's the problem. It's not compliant with the, with the.
And you're saying you can't do the three feet and the three feet?
No, you can't put a six-foot fence on top of a three-foot berm, maximum six feet.
Right, but if you did a three foot and a three foot?
We could do that.
So the vinyl fence right now is a six-foot.
Correct.
Can I make a suggestion? Would it be possible to put, I, we want to be good neighbors, I honestly believe that. What about putting an exist, a fence that you say is going to increase the sound attenuation on our side of the property, immediately in front of the white fence in this area? Would that help? One of our reasons for using the white fence is aesthetically pleasing, unless Foster, who abuts the property, cares to disagree, is much more aesthetically pleasing than a wooden fence that is going to rot. If there is in fact science that says that attenuates sound much, much better, I think we would be willing to put that wooden fence in front of the white fence on our property, that then will attenuate that sound.
Go the other way around.
No, sorry, please.
Because.
Or the other way around.
Or the other way around, whichever you would prefer. I think that is something we would be more than willing to do, if, if that's.
Why am I not following this? How does this remedy that?
I don't know how it would remedy it.
That doesn't remedy three foot on top of the berm.
Right.
But of course, there's sound, there's sound attenuating material that could be tacked right on to the back of your plastic wall, your plastic fence, and then a wooden fence.
Or add a wooden fence, whichever.
On the other side. So essentially, you've got a sandwich, and you could put a sound attenuating material. There are lots of sound attenuating materials available now, many more than there used to be.
It would just be a question of, I guess, which side of the fence, whether it's our side or facing the other side. Whichever would work best.
I think a sound engineer would know that best.
Yeah.
I know, I think.
Well, you want to put it on the side where the sound is, so it would be on the inside from the camp side to absorb the sound.
That's what I would assume, but.
Yeah.
The other side of the fence is the private property owner's.
That's right.
I assume this is on the property.
Well, the area of the berm, it's about a hundred feet at one point, and forty feet to where the berm is, and this is all vegetated in between.
So that's still your property on the other side of the fence?
Correct.
Okay.
On that portion where the berm was proposed. The berm was there because the, the open field there, and the slope of the field, to catch the drainage there, to make sure it didn't go past that location and it stayed in the drainage pools.
Then, how was the drainage being managed if the berm isn't there?
Right now, the pools are just put in.
We have five pools now in front of that fence, as per the plan.
They held off putting a berm, knowing that we might have an issue here. So, but they will put the berm in, depending on how we resolve this.
Have the pools been put in so that you need the berm for the stormwater? Or did you, could you regrade that here, so it naturally doesn't go beyond that?
I think, I think we could do that, but I think this is Tom Houghton directing us to put the berm in for that purpose. And I think, you know, if you're an engineer, you might think it might be a little overkill, but either way.
All, all the pools have grading that lead into the pools currently.
Do we have to stick to this six-foot fence idea?
We have to, we have to stick with sound attenuating something.
Right.
Which is what we were committed to do.
But can we, can we attain that goal with three-foot berm, three-foot fencing of some sort?
I think it was, again, from where we were standing, I think that seems like has been the issue, is it's, it's just not high enough. From where you are, you're kind of getting the neighbors at their, you know, eye level.
What is quite low, the berm?
Claire, put the photo up.
The six feet is not quite.
So if you look at, so this location is a little higher, and it slopes, it slopes down like this. And there is a, golly, a lack of word, that goes down here where the driveway is, goes down all the way to the pond.
Right.
So you have a slope like this. So if you put the fence down here, it does no good. So the planning board, that's why it's different.
That's why the berm, yeah.
Up here, and when it veered out into our property, even though this is all wooded and trees, this is at the top of the hill where the field is.
So the only way to remedy that would be to bring in, bring in more soil and compromise the existing grading and then bring it up?
Well, that was what the proposal was first, to put the berm there to make sure the water didn't continue to go overland into the, down the hill.
So the berm in or not? I mean, it's not there. So a berm could be installed, and then a fence put on top of it?
As long as it doesn't exceed six feet, unless we get a variance.
In total height, yes.
Is a berm a structure in our code?
Yes.
It is.
And it expressly states.
Oh, up to six feet.
A pond is not, but a structure, but a berm is, yeah, right, go figure.
Well, there was just some new changes to the zoning on how to measure.
Height.
Height.
Height of structures, but the berms, there's a whole section in itself.
Who's been, who, in the initial application, was your consultant the one who advised about sound attenuation?
That, that's the part, and as Claire just read part of it, so I, I literally got these comments this morning, so I've asked VHB to come back and tell me how, where, what.
So it sounds like there's two things. One, a stockade fence was specified, you put up a white fence, is that acceptable on that?
They're both solid, right.
And secondly, in the absence of a berm, I mean, if you could, might have to adjust the site plan so that you don't need a berm, if you, if you could do a stormwater without a berm. And is a six-foot high stockade fence or a white fence, if it's acceptable, with trees planted behind it, does that provide sound attenuation, sufficient sound attenuation to, you know, maybe two rows of trees? You see, I know trees provide a certain amount of sound attenuation as well, in the absence of a.
There is landscaping installed there as well.
You know, there might be, every visit that.
What landscaping was proposed?
You can see some of the, the trees, the evergreens that were installed, they're in right here.
But just, but just a few.
Yeah.
That's actually further south of. It's in the general area, but that's further south than the area you're talking about. The area you're talking about is, is north. And there are two rows of, there are two rows of evergreens in front of the fence. Then obviously, you have the deciduous trees that are already pre-existing prior, behind the fence.
So what is the best, most efficient way to solve this six-foot nap?
I don't think you're going to solve it right now.
No.
No. But obviously, the site plan, it's whether they're trying to get feedback from you, and you may need more information, whether you'd be amenable to change the site plan, but I think you need information, right? What would achieve the purpose of the sound attenuation, if it's not what was approved?
Right, right.
And we've got.
Or are they willing to do what's approved and go to the zoning board of appeals with your support, which is what it says in the staff report? So I think they have some thinking to do, and then getting some information to you about what they want to propose.
And I would offer that we've got a summer season coming up. And personally, it would be great if something could be done for the sound this season, so the neighbors are not having to deal with the issues.
That white fence is there, it's been there a couple of years now.
But it doesn't do anything, Wayne, I mean, I wish it did, but it doesn't.
No complaints.
We didn't have any complaints last summer, I think for the first time in, in ten years.
No, there've been, there've been complaints filed, absolutely.
None that have been brought to my attention on the property, but, but, okay.
There's a, there's, believe me.
Okay.
You know, so what would you recommend, Claire, how do we?
Well, here's the issue, as you're raising, is right now, we need your authorization of the site plan, again, so we can complete all this. I would ask that the board do that, and we can, you can add a caveat that we're going to have to resolve that before COs are issued.
What about all the other issues that we spotted?
Well, they would normally be resolved before the COs are issued anyway. I mean, the revegetation and the completion of the roads.
I'd be stronger, I mean, to complete it, just like the plans.
I would, too.
But the, but the fence is obviously a rock and a hard place that they, but you.
Right, I mean, it's not compliant with the site plan, and you know, had we not gone to the site, and I personally was shocked, I've renamed it Camp Gravel. It was astounding, thinking that you've got less than sixty days to do all of this work. You know, I mean, I don't envy your job, believe me, it is challenging.
The mild winter has meant that we could have, we did significantly more work this off-season than we would ever have been able to do with more than one snowfall.
Right.
I mean, as Wayne said, all of the septics are in the ground, the.
Yeah, we saw those, they're all in, we saw those.
And look, again, the gravel, we did, we spent nine years saying we didn't want to take trees down. I mean, it was this board that approved, or the engineer, and the board then approved the engineer's plans. And we've taken down what we were told we had to do.
Well, gravel and trees are two different things. I mean, you know, there are pavers, there's all kinds of stuff, but. And so just in my own mind, and for Tom's as well, this very, very wide entrance, not the entrance itself, which is.
You mean the, the interior roadway?
Yes, the one that goes to the right, that's quite, so that is to accommodate two buses side by side, is that it?
It was my understanding that it is code, that if you have a vehicle driving inside the property, such as a bus, it needed to be as wide as a dual carriageway, two, two carriageways. That's my understanding of it, I'm not an engineer, but that is my understanding.
Yeah, you have a drop-off area, and then you have a travel way. So when you say side by side, so you have the area where they're dropping people off, and then you have to have the travel way. So that was the engineering purpose.
So what's, what's the width of that road?
I was looking for a dimension on here, and I can't really see it, if you have a scale.
To me, it looked thirty, thirty-five, forty feet, maybe.
Forty feet, yeah.
Probably forty feet.
Yeah.
It's twenty at the gate, I, I believe it's forty.
It's forty.
I understand the theory, of course, kind of like a bus shelter, you have a bus turnout, that the bus can pull over safely, let people out while vehicles pass.
And it's a one-way road?
It just seemed very, very wide for that purpose.
It is, it is one-way. We've never proposed it, it's, we've, since I've been there in ten years.
It's a loop road, yeah.
Yeah. We've never used it as a.
Bus travels under standard fifteen-foot.
See, you notice this, this parking area here, which is for administration and everything else.
That's where we park.
The normal width, it's because only the bus is in here, which is this big wire.
But it's two bus widths, so, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, might I suggest that Claire asks that question of Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Tom just pointed out that it's exactly what they proposed. He didn't have any special information about bus.
Can we, can we double-check with?
Yeah, well, and they're engineer, obviously, they have Butler Engineering.
Okay.
Yeah.
And look, you have me on record, if it's wider than it should be, I'll be the first person to say we'll, we'll reduce it, because I don't need any.
You don't need more gravel?
I mean, the gravel, to pertain to those comments, I know you made a number of comments to Danielle about the gravel. The gravel, the drainage for gravel is much softer than asphalt.
Yeah, no, listen, absolutely, not a substitute for, you know, we want the percolation.
But grass is better.
But grass pavers and grass are much better. Particularly for, for summer, you know, summer, for summer camp, you know.
So that's the final surface, that's.
Yes.
Yes.
So why don't we leave it, Claire, that this be looked into? We're not going to extend anything, we need to get some compliance.
Why would you extend it? We can't comply because you don't have an approval for us.
Yeah, but you haven't complied with the site plan.
We will comply, like all site plans, before the CO is issued.
Well.
How are you going to treat us differently than you do any other site plan?
Well, very, because you have a timing situation. What would you propose? That we, that we give you an extension?
The site plan? Why would you withhold it? You don't want us to complete the site plan?
We want it, then I would ask for a timed, absolute phased schedule from you. What's going to be done next week? What's going to be done May 20th? Absolutely, so that we can go and see that it's being done. I mean, otherwise, it's, it's, we're in the dark. You know, we go and then it's not done and you're going to say, well, we have to open the camp and I'm sorry.
I mean, what, if I may ask, what are you expecting wanting to be done in the next two months?
What if we do a two-month extension? Right, so you continue, continue.
And what's going to happen in two months?
You're going to resolve, you're going to try and resolve these issues and have a plan of which, where we're going to go.
Well, not if we have to go to the ZBA, but.
But then you'll come back and say you're going to ZBA and they'll give you an extension.
But, you know, why wouldn't you just try to comply?
They are.
I mean, what we would need here is some cooperation.
Wait a minute, you're saying all the construction they were doing is not complying? And the cooperation is they're complying, they're constructing the site plan improvements. And now you're holding them up because they can't put in the gates because you didn't get an approval?
But if, if we can give them another, I mean, in total, they would get a year, but what, but you want a check-in, you want it, so what if we did like abbreviated extensions so that they would be coming in and
saying, reporting what they've been doing and how they're curing it and what they're taking care of, so you have that.
And then you can continue with the intent, if you're moving along, you'll continue to grant the extension. So it's, that's a good solution.
And, but we've already told you, there are certain buildings that we have approval to change.
Right.
Which we're not going to do until the fall.
Okay. I, I think the issue right now is trying to resolve the fence and the berm. That's what needs to be done from the board's standpoint, I believe, over the next two months. We need a resolve to that. And they're willing to extend it, they just want to keep an eye on it and not give you a year and then you go off and then this comes back. So I'm trying to think of a way that you can both get something that you want and work about it, work through.
For an extension, but a caveat that we have to address the fence within a certain period of time.
Within two months?
No, within less. They open up in two months.
That's what I'm saying. So like, it's like six and one half does the other, what's the difference?
Yeah, but when you say resolve it, what?
Have a plan. I don't mean it has to be.
I think we can come back and tell you a plan and see if it's acceptable to you one way or another, but I don't know if.
Are you going to get it done before summer?
Get a zoning board variance and put a new fence in.
I mean, I guess it depends on what you mean by done.
I mean, I, Christine, I like where you're going, but I'm, I'm sort of seeing we have an interim challenge that we, we think that the plastic fence is not going to have the sound attenuation. If there's something that can be done short-term for this season, at the same time have the applicant go and file with the ZBA a request for the berm and the six-foot fence. So that's a long-term solution and a short-term amelioration for the community. Would be my recommendation as, and move forward with giving the applicant.
The extension.
The extension.
And maybe they could come back in two weeks with an update on a plan for possible options for the fence here and how to go.
Like I said, we needed to do the research, which we only got this this morning.
Right.
I, I, yeah, I don't, if, if we're looking at the sandwich idea, I don't think it's going to take a long time to put up an extra, you know, 120-foot panels of, of stockade fence.
To solve the, the short-term, this summer issue for the community.
We have to get some sound attenuation in there through the fence, by hook or by crook. What were you going to say, Claire?
Um, yeah, we just need that information of what the sandwich is going to do, right?
Yep.
And could we maybe get a little input from Anthony with regard to the ZBA process and if there's a way to expedite that?
No, he's got no power.
That was harsh.
On the record.
The ZBA is months out from scheduling and understands something. I just want to be very clear, I'm not trying to cause problems, but a ZBA, we're going to have a hearing on this. Understand, we're going to have a hearing and everyone's going to show up to this hearing. We're going to be having a hearing on a six-foot fence and a three-foot berm only. That's what the hearing is supposed to be on. But if, if things go out of control, I can't say that the zoning board won't turn around and say, we need to adjourn this, we need to get comments from the planning board.
Right.
So I have some concerns that this zoning board process could take longer than it should be when the only issue is a berm and a fence that the planning board is supportive of, and I would imagine that the public is supportive of too.
Yeah, all right.
But, you know, timeframes are hard.
I think there's got to be some kind of engineering somewhat solution here. Buy the product, look at some sound attenuating materials. We put it in once, Bonnie Schnittler was a sound engineer and she worked with us on the, the shooting range, where the police shooting range was, and there was a.
West Hampton.
Right, exactly. And that was extremely effective. It was berm, fencing, sound attenuation, very effective.
There's a wall, yeah.
Yeah, very effective.
So you want to do the approval for the, your extension on the condition they come back in a month with some type of plan or two weeks or three weeks, whatever it is, to take care of the attenuation?
Resolve the fence.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd say in a couple of weeks. Let's try to get, move it along. You, you guys just don't have a lot of time. That's what I'm thinking about, your job, you know? There's a lot to do.
Eighteen-hour days are in his future.
Yes.
How long do you think you need for them to come back?
I can't, I'm not here May 11th.
She's not here May 11th.
Well, how long do you think you need?
We can come back in a month, which is whatever that next week.
So second weekend, second weekend.
Okay, we'll give you an extension till.
The 20, 25th, okay.
You can give them the extension today and then subjects will come back.
So it'll be a reapproval until May 25th?
A year, a year, on the condition they come in on that date with a plan, with a fence.
And then if they don't come in on May 25th, it expires?
Yeah, they don't have, then they don't have a condition, then their approvals doesn't.
I thought we were giving extension, reapproval for just a, a month.
I think they were saying that that, that doesn't work. They, they would, they would prefer if we could, and it's really kind of six and one half does the other, give it to them for the year, because this is, this is moving forward. Give it to them for the year on the condition they come in in four weeks. If they don't come in four weeks with a plan, how to mitigate these things to your satisfaction, then they, they don't have, they don't have an extension.
They don't have an approval, then what? Then what are they going to do?
Then they have to re, I don't know.
I, I would suggest that we could have something before then. I understand Claire's not going to be here, but we can send it to Claire.
Oh, yeah, I was made it ahead of time and we could just send it.
Yeah.
So you, you're not going to see it for the first time on May the 25th or the 24th. We, we can have it too much sooner.
Okay.
That's perfect, great.
All right.
Okay, good. Do you feel comfortable with that?
How does the board feel about that?
I think we're, we're doing a good job of making lemonade.
See, we're trying to work with you. Appreciate it.
So you have to work with us.
Reapproval in, for one year from this date.
But review, but, but, reviewable in one month, subject to a review in one month, and that it would be withdrawn if the.
We don't shut up.
If the, if the, if the requirements of resolution for the fence are not resolved by then, okay?
Sorry.
And this will, and this will be the final extension you can get in the site plan.
Yeah.
Wayne, maybe you could.
Hopefully, we'll have everything. The intent is, is just those remaining items, those other buildings. That they will get those permits in the fall and they'll be done next off-season.
Maybe you can talk to Tom and see if there's some other mitigative measure they can use other than the berm, and then you'll just be dealing with the attenuation, sound attenuation issue there as opposed to dealing with both of those issues.
I mean, it's fine. It comes down to, as Claire is suggesting, is that somewhere, it was suggested that there be a berm and the fence such that there was nine feet there versus six feet. Because right now you have a fence with six feet.
Right.
Right, because of the.
But you're hearing from the board.
Notwithstanding what the material is.
But you're hearing from the board, whatever resolves those issues is what they want. They're not, you know, nine feet, it has to be nine feet. If it resolves the, the water issue and it resolves the sound attenuation, they'll work with you.
If, if the berm were there, then it would all, you know, then you wouldn't need, you still would need a variance.
Yes.
It's because the berm doesn't exist.
Unless he did a three-foot.
And he did a three-foot fence, right.
If it was natural grade, then.
You may be okay with.
I think the language is critically important that, you know, that this be, Claire, can we pull up to see if Bonnie Schnittler is still in that business?
She's not. We checked the last time. We checked three years ago.
Okay, so she's no longer doing that.
There's another woman in East Hampton that we used for something. I forget what it was.
Let's, let us also.
Claire, if you can get that to me, I'll, I'll work on it ASAP.
Okay, yep.
That's what we need.
Yep, more than happy to.
Good, thank you.
Okay, would you like to pass the resolution? Reapproval.
Can you read it?
April 27th, 2024, subject to the applicant's coming back to the planning board to their satisfaction on May 25th to address the fence on top of the berm and associated sound attenuation.
Or?
That's it. They have to, or they.
So they've really got a mouth.
Subject to, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Or it expires, or the site plan expires.
Or, let's put that in, or the site plan expires.
Yes.
So that we understand that language, okay? Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
All right, who's going to move it? Motion by.
Motion.
Gloria, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Post abstentions, five in favor, two absent.
Thank you.
Could you pass?
Yes.
She made, she made brownies, she made brownies.
Anthony, I was surprised to learn you have no power.
What's that?
I hope that was very harsh.
She was joking. She was joking.
Jackie, I'm going to be doing the meeting with you all tonight, so I'm just going to go through my last few things with you, if that's okay?
Yeah, sure.
High Dunes, nice and easy now. I'm not a compliment, I, you know, I separately mentioned separately, but here it is.
I always leave a little time on Thursday morning for you.
I appreciate it. Someone's got to leave something. So you all might remember, this is on Dude Road in West Hampton, the High Dunes condominiums, I believe this is on page 65. There might be a map aerials in there, but I handed out the resolution.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So initially, they were coming in to do the siding and the windows and then to replace decks and then to expand the front decks by 1300 square feet each, so. Pre-submission conference, the whole nine yards. Subsequent to that, we had the pre-submission conference, nobody came out. The applicant then said, we're eliminating the expansion of the decks and we're just doing in-kind, in-place replacement of the siding and windows. And then the decks on the south side of the building and nothing else. So actually, it was able to be done administratively at that point. But the thing is, Janice, we already had the hearing, it's already before the board. So I just said, let me just finish with the board. The, Marty's office has already looked at the coastal erosion and FEMA stuff, so everything's been done that should be done in the building departments.
Do you know why they changed their mind about?
Cost.
Cost, and materials, so.
Which is actually, you know, and what happens, once these things become, and, and, you know, you're not lifting that condo development, you know, on piles, so at some point, you've got to look at cost and whether or not it's going to create a FEMA problem for you, so. So in this case, I'm just recommending, it's a type-two action under SECRA, this is on the first page of the resolution. An application for the coastal erosion department is currently pending approval, they're just waiting for the planning board to sign off on this. So I'm recommending approval of this in-kind, in-place replacement, the renovations to the building exterior with new siding and windows for High Dunes condominiums and the existing deck, and by the way, on the south side. Subject to submission of the six copies of the revised plans. I just want the plans revised to reflect that it's in-kind, in-place and no expansion of the decks.
So you have more detail, do you not, on the administrative review, like AD windows?
Yeah, it's going to be all the units, it's on all the units, actually, all 41 units. So I can say in there.
Please.
On all 41 units, so that we know it's, it's taking place in all the units. And then the, the notarized affidavit, and that's all I would need to that.
Okay.
I'll move.
Moved by George, second by Craig, all in favor? Post abstentions, five in favor, two absent?
Page, number 16, the wine room, page 98. I'm finishing up my stuff, John.
Is this really a bar? What is it? I'm curious.
No, well, here, it says here, for expanding parts to stolen drainage, subject to the proposed change of use from a salon to a restaurant slash wine bar.
Okay.
So here's, you raise an interesting question. They're already in there. They already went in there, they got a violation. They came to me, I told them, you're going to have to go through this process, we're going to need parking, they got, they got to do all the site plan stuff. As to the use, I got from the inspector, you know, it's okay, it's a restaurant slash wine bar, but what they're saying in the pre-submission conference report, because it just raises issues, I don't know what that means exactly. Is it, is it a single use with an accessory bar, a restaurant with an accessory bar? Or is it a wine tasting? I mean, it, it's, those are two separate uses with two different, you know, sets of issues. Right now, what's being proposed is a restaurant with a slash wine bar. So I'm treating it as if it's an accessory bar to the restaurant, and I'm going to see what comes out of the review, because right now, we did, submitted the pre-submission.
It's old number 15.
It's old number 15. And right across the street from this in Hampton Bays, this is on West Montauk, West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays. Right across the street is the, the firehouse, to give you some reference to, to where the site is. And they submitted, you know, a site plan and it's showing new drainage, new septic, expanded parking. So this is really just to schedule the pre-submission conference and I'm recommending that we do that for.
June 8th.
June, is it in the resume like that?
That's what I have written down.
Then that's what it is, June 8th it is.
Okay, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Post abstentions, six in favor?
Next one's off the agenda. Okay, what do I have next? Number, page 105, 19 Streveland Klein. Okay, Streveland Klein, we looked at this last time. This is the office site plan in West Hampton, right next to the post office in the Hamlet of West Hampton, which is right next to the 7-Eleven.
I'm sorry, Anthony, 17th off, you said?
Was that, yeah, 17th off. So we're just looking at 19 Streveland Klein.
Yep.
We, actually, this, it was just a 3,000 square foot, very nice building, office. We had a pre-submission on it, and they went to the zoning board, so they had two public hearings. At the last meeting, we deemed it complete and scheduled a public hearing for June 8th. Subsequent to that, the applicant representative got in touch with me and said, in light of the fact that we've had two hearings on this and no one from the public showed up, they've requested that, you know, we waive the public hearing with a 30-day written comment period. So I just prepared a resolution that, that the board agrees that we would just rescind the previous resolution as it relates to the, um, scheduling the public hearing and waiving it with a 30-day written comment period. Very simple.
Yep. Motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, and second by Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Christine, can you hand me an agenda, please, sir?
And the last one I have is number 23, which might have been number 22 on a previous resolution, is Howard Irrevocable Trust.
Thanks, Claire.
That's the one on Neuyak Road with the legalizing the apartment.
Over the garage.
Over the garage. Yeah, we're going to do an extension of the action deadline for that one until May 25th.
Okay, May 25th, motion? Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor? Post abstentions, five in favor, two absent?
See everyone soon.
Thank you, Anthony.
Hi.
Claire.
Check Possinelli, number seven, uh, page 70. This was where the applicant was asking for clarification that the conditions would be only subject to as long as the property remains farm, so if you remember that. There was a public hearing on, at the last meeting for this. And I have provided just a little bit of an updated one on this original stated, yeah, it does say the planning board. So it's just slightly updated.
I have a question regarding this, probably to the council. I've been on this board for two past years. I've never encountered a request like this.
Okay.
It's unusual.
It's unusual?
Yeah.
Okay, but it's, we're not setting precedent here in any way, are we?
No, you're, the only precedent you're setting is that you're trying to facilitate a meeting of the minds to help an applicant. There's no legal precedent that you're setting and doing.
Okay, yeah, I just don't want a string of applications with a bunch of ifs, ands.
No, no, no. This is an extraordinary circumstance, I think the board understood, and they understood where he was coming from, and it wasn't contemplated, unfortunately, when we were first discussing it, so we were just trying to.
Okay, I'm set up.
So basically, they'll be two resolved, one would be to amend the condition that, to reflect that this would be as long as the farm is in operation to yours, and you be the decider whether the farm is no longer in operation, and then also the conditions of the site plan approval likewise, so.
So you, you give the ingredients of the condition that, whereas?
Yes. This is the first, yes, that whereas, the fourth whereas, I say what the conditions were back in October thirteenth, and then you had a decision that, based on those conditions, you had these certain conditions. So these conditions would be still in place, but only as long as it is active farm as you determine it.
So is this an amended conditioned?
This, it would be an amended conditioning. I will file, that's why the result, it will amend it, and I will refile it again with the EMB, so it's official. But this time, it's going to say, as long as it remains inactive farm, these conditions will be in place.
And he didn't want to specify that it was a sunflower farm? No. So your language here, your second language, submission declaration covenants for the following? I'm a little confused, Claire.
This is resolved.
The last two.
Yeah.
And then the condition like that. Okay.
The first time I read that, I was, why do you have two resolves? And I didn't, I, now that you've explained it, it makes sense.
Yeah, we, I mean, technically.
Oh, do you want to do two actions, or just one?
No, one, I think that's fine.
Okay.
I think it's, it's self-explanatory in here.
Any other questions on this? Any other discussion? Okay, motion to approve?
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Post abstentions, five in favor, two absent. Meadow View Covenant Amendment?
Yes.
At two sixty-five Watermill Town Road. Hi, John.
Hi.
Can you sit there?
You can, you can sit here.
Mike Shannon?
Yes, hi, Mike.
Page seventy-five.
Claire, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, no, I'll speak first. So, way back when, what, how many years ago was this, eighty-seven? The planning board approved a cluster subdivision, which had an agricultural reserve, and with the agricultural reserve, they specified the location of buildings on it. So that is, this is what the map shows, and that's just a blow-up of the map there. The applicant has submitted a request to relocate a portion of that building envelope for farm buildings associated with it. So I do have that map off.
Claire?
Yep.
The location and structures, allowable structures, that was shown on the original subdivision map had, was previously revised, so this is the second.
This is the second round vision, that's not the latest vision? This is not the latest plan?
I just wanted the board to understand that. That is the original area.
Okay.
That area got shifted over to, what is it, turned around like the north?
North.
Yeah.
So what, what year was that?
Ninety-six. Year ninety-six.
So it was originally nineteen eighty-seven, and then it was revised in?
Yeah, eighty-seven, and then ninety-six.
Okay, so let me put that as a finding.
Where is, where is the?
So it's the original, so that now.
So where is it now, in this? The person.
And just so you know, in the interim, they changed the setback.
John, can you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to do. John Bennett, the applicant, just, in the interim, they changed the setback for annual from a hundred to two hundred feet. And, so it just doesn't make any sense anymore. Right. I'm sorry, Mike.
Yes, Mike, identify yourself.
Michael Shiano, from InterScience, on behalf of the applicant. Yeah, so the agricultural reserve one, just making sure I have all the numbers correct, was the area that was designated where structures could go. And between, it was changed between eighty-six and ninety-six, or between these two maps that we have, I'm sorry. And since then, the town, as John just mentioned, increased the setback for agricultural buildings. So, part of this area that we now have designated for where agricultural structures can go, essentially means that we can't use it for agricultural structures, because the setback was increased. This was not submitted as part of that, but it just is a map that our office prepared, that just kind of provides you with a better visualization of where the reserve is that you can actually build in.
This is the nineteen ninety-seven reserve?
Yes, this is the most recent one, that is currently active today.
Okay.
And so what we are proposing to do is take the area that is closest to the street, which we can't build in because it is less than the required setback, and move it to the landward side, I'm sorry, I'm so used to talking about landlands.
Move it in.
Move it further from the, from the street, so that we can actually build there. And the plans that were submitted show that we're maintaining the existing setback of this building, which we're allowed to do under.
Under the interpretation.
Under the interpretation from the chief building inspector. We're allowed to maintain that, that setback without it increasing the degree of non-conformity, so we don't need a variance for it.
And what is it that you want to build?
It's, it's here, it's.
Currently, this, Ben, can you come up there and you want to add?
And by the way. What we're here for is to move the allowed area of agricultural structures. We obviously have to come back in for cycling and everything, but it's a chicken and the egg thing, so obviously, even though we.
But are you expanding it, John?
Oh, yeah.
You're expanding the agricultural area? The, I mean, the building portion?
It's moving, but we're not, it's, the total amount of square footage, is it remaining the same?
For the agricultural reserve area, it is not getting larger. We are taking area out here that we can't use, and we are moving it.
Tacking it on to that?
Tacking it to that side.
So the configuration changes.
So the configuration changes, yes.
Can you help orient me, I know this is what is Seven Ponds Town Road. What's, there looks like there's a road on the bottom of this that I can't read?
That's Edge of Woods at the bottom.
Okay.
Ben, just.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ben Chalif, Chalif and Rogers Architects, for the applicant. So the proposed structures within that proposed shift, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There are houses.
There are residential lots on the, on Long Seven Ponds Town that are excluded from the agricultural reserve.
I think only one of them is improved, no? Yes. This one is under, under the Riggio's ownership.
Right.
Yeah, I, now I know where you're talking.
Okay.
It just helps me to see it, there it is.
So how much closer to the first house in the subdivision will you be by moving this?
It's not.
It's still very far away.
First house in the subdivision.
You mean that, this corner?
Yeah.
You can see it's.
No.
Are the ones that are underneath this label here?
Well, we're not decreasing, we're not decreasing the setback.
Is that on the dislot here?
We are not going to be closer to either one of these, because this, we are maintaining this setback.
Is that a lot, what is that, is that a lot up there, no, north of the buildings?
Oh, north of the buildings, these are all, this is all part of the paddocks, these are paddocks for horses.
Okay. So this is a horse farm?
Where is Seven Ponds Town Road on this?
Right here.
Okay.
So this is, this is north.
Okay. So what are you putting up now, stable for horses, or what?
Yeah, so they currently have an existing combination indoor riding rink and stable in one large metal barn, which is, does not meet their needs anymore, and it's outdated. So this is proposing to basically split them into separate footprints, where it's one large indoor riding rink and separate stable.
Where are the, where are the existing buildings now?
The existing building is, is that what's in the red? Basically underneath of the.
Okay, so it's under that.
Riding rink, right, and that's the, yes, northern property, northern wall that we're keeping, essentially, in terms of setback and shifting, increasing east.
That's the existing indoor.
So right now, it comes and terminates at this red line that is here?
Yeah.
It stops there.
Right, and they're flipping the piece that was by the road inland?
Yes.
Well, there's a new building going up.
Yeah. How big, how large is that?
The stable part? Um, square footage is, I'm trying to remember now.
Glad you're doing it.
Very nice to prepare plans, but.
Yes. Remember the numbers, no?
Square footage?
I'm sorry, we were so prepared to talk about the covenant. Yeah, right? It's, well, okay, it's, the indoor riding rink is roughly one hundred by two hundred and eighteen, so.
Twenty-two, twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-two thousand. And the stable is more like.
I want to say nine thousand.
Back of the envelope. Yeah, eight to nine thousand for the stable, including office and lounge and other associated leases.
Housing?
Excuse me?
You said housing.
We're looking into that.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, what's interesting, it's going to, I don't know, but all this, no, not now, but all this is going to depend upon some litigation that's happening in the Sagaponic, because the town, for a long time, said that's not a residential use. And there's nothing planned now, but just for general purposes and information, the town, for a long time, said accessory to agriculture is not a residential use, and a couple of the town board members differed, but the same thing happened in Sagaponic, and now that's the subject of a lawsuit. And the town and Sagaponic made a motion to dismiss it, and the judge didn't grant it. So, interesting, it's still in state of flux, but there's no current.
No, I mean, I don't see any issue with this, I think it'll work. Anybody have any problems? Any questions? So are we amending a covenant, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I think we'd suggest a public hearing.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
And a referral to the agricultural.
Yeah.
Just so somebody can give me notice of when they're going to, when they're going to hear it.
Yes, so we're planning the availability of June eighth.
Yeah, but you don't, you don't have a date on the.
No, the.
On the egg, the meeting monthly?
It's always a work in progress, I can hit you first.
So hearing for June eighth?
Okay, great, thanks.
Thanks, I think it'll be quite beautiful, say hi to Dad.
Well, they're extremely good stewards of the property, as they are, and they're wonderful residents in Bridgehampton, as you know.
I drive by there probably twice a week.
The, the Ocean Road, Bridgehampton?
No, no, this, I. The Edge of Woods Road.
Beautiful property.
It's one of my favorite back, back roads into Southampton Village.
You're designing, you're designing it?
No, I'm not, there's, there's a.
What?
Specialty architects.
Who does stables?
Junior that does this thing specifically, so they're very wise to hire someone like that.
You know.
I thought you guys were only doing small houses now, according to your father.
Sometimes, most of the time, I should say, yeah.
There was a, there's a beautiful stable in Bridgehampton, but it's really deluxe, and there's an indoor, air-conditioned riding thing. Hannah was managing at the time, we went for a site visit, he said the horses don't want to go outside, because they're so comfortable. Only in the Hamptons, right?
They don't get a feel.
No, I mean, they had outdoor, beautiful outdoor, they liked it.
It's too hot outside.
They liked it. They were the most spectacular horses.
I remember the client of mine saying that she knows the person who was taking care of the house with her. You know, she knew anybody to do any ironing, and the person taking the care of the house said, no, but if you find somebody, I could, I could use them too.
Only here. All right, good luck with that.
Thank you.
Be nice.
Thank you.
Eighteen?
Do you mind if I just stay here?
Are you up next? Your, your Blessing Fields?
You have to stand up instead of.
The mobile home park?
No.
So we're up to Blessing Fields, Claire?
Yes. That one I'm recommending completeness, it was, SECRA was already completed, and set a public hearing, it was a special exception.
Okay.
Do, um, we can do June eighth, but I was kind of planning on doing Tesla on June eighth, too. Can we do five that night, or do you feel too crowded?
That's a lot. Who are they?
Uh, who are they?
Where are they?
The wine room, um. Yeah. And two hundred North McGee, and then Meadow View, which we just sat, we're sending, right? Can we pass the resolution?
We did, didn't we? We did.
Yeah, we did.
Did I take a vote?
On which one?
This last one?
The Meadow View in order to set up.
I don't think so.
No, I don't, we didn't take a vote.
We talked, we didn't vote.
You didn't take a vote, okay.
Okay, so I, let's take a vote, okay? We pass this covenant amendment?
Yes, to schedule a hearing.
To schedule a hearing for June eighth?
Yep.
Motion, George, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Post abstentions, five in favor, two absent.
I think you should put this on the next one. The Blessing. Twenty-fifth?
Do it on the.
Just for the sake of throwing it out there, this has been, this had a pre-submission conference hearing. I know we have to do a hearing because of the special exception, but we had a pre-submission conference hearing, and I think two or three hearings with the zoning board, and no one showed up for any of them, I'm not saying that they're not going to, but, I'm just throwing it out there, since I'm already going to be there, so, but I understand if you can.
So what's the date after June eighth?
That would be the twenty-second.
Okay, so June twenty-second? Okay, so on Blessing Fields, one sixty-three West Montauk Highway, scheduling, it's complete, and scheduled a public hearing for June twenty-second? Motion by Gloria, and second by Craig, all in favor? Post abstentions, five in favor, two absent. You're the next one, too?
Great.
Yes, my resource Tesla, that one is virtually complete, but we're still waiting for some town engineer. I spoke to John Bennett, and he is saying he can get all the town engineer issues worked out. It's an existing building.
Yeah, same building, yeah.
They're doing some work on the property, but it's not a redevelopment or something.
Okay.
Claire, in the report that was in the packet?
Yep.
It says, site plan have, parentheses, have not.
Yes, so I prepared that resolution for you on Friday.
Okay.
But I didn't have the town engineer, so I don't know if it's going to be complete or incomplete. Yes, that's why, if you see that, it's just a little too early for me to make that determination yet.
Okay, so.
I'm going to change that, and it's going to say.
Well, so, do we?
Or in this case, I'm going to say, pending the town engineer sign off prior to the hearing dates, because I want to make sure we have everything we need to do this. So I'm going to specify that we're waiting for town engineer to be.
So it's complete, but?
But the town.
That quote, and we're scheduled following that for June eighth?
June eighth, yes.
Okay.
It's my stuff, we'll get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John Bennett.
Yes. Okay, good, thank you, John.
Thank you.
The wine line is done. You're done, right?
Because there was more. East Quad Mobile. East Quad Mobile Home. It's, um.
Can I take a motion on that?
Oh, yes.
Oh, shoot, yeah, that's a smart idea.
I did, didn't I?
No, no motion, right?
You have a motion for June eighth.
For Tesla.
I thought I did, it was you and Craig, all in favor, I moved him.
You moved, yeah, we didn't move. Was that the one, was that the one, this one, this one is for?
This one. Blessing Fields, it was.
Jackie, you need a motion for the Tesla?
I need the Tesla, yeah, I need the Tesla, sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
So it's deemed complete, except for your thing. Schedule a public hearing, motion by?
Craig.
Craig, and second by?
I'll say.
George.
And then hearing is June eighth.
Right.
June eighth.
And we're all in favor.
That is not, no, no, no. Oh, yeah, that's June eighth. I'm sorry, too many questions. So, East Quad Mobile Home Park. That we are going to deem incomplete. The town engineer has a, a number of items, I have a number of items, I have my checklist. John, I'm sorry, I don't remember my-
What number is this now?
I didn't see your checklist.
Eighteen, so this is Strebel and Clown.
No, 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 this is the Quad Mobile Home.
Jesus.
That's very wild.
You know?
You have to read it too, right?
No, I have all of this agenda on loose pages and I keep, they're getting out of order?
Yeah.
And they're renumbered.
Maybe, maybe we can get the, the agenda staples.
Staples, it would be much easier.
You know, I'm going to request on this.
You're not deeming East Quad Mobile Home Park.
Right.
You know, I'm going to request on this, at the zoning board of appeals meeting, which they granted all the, was a fair amount of public comment. The engineer stuff is going to be worked out, whatever it is, we're going to have to, you know, come to some sort of agreement on it. I think a public hearing on it would, would inform some of your decision-making on this, because there was concerns about location and stuff like that. You're from the public. I'm not saying, obviously, I can't get a move on until I work out the engineer stuff and I work out the other things. It's on for June eighth. Selfishly, I'd like to have one more hearing so I don't have to come multiple times.
That's the plan.
But obviously, I'm not, you know, I have to, I have to come to terms with the engineers' reports and Claire's reports, but there were comments at the zoning board of appeals meeting, you might want to hear from the public, it might, it might inform your decision-making. Again, it's not, and it might create changes, and I'm going to engineer, and then you might have some changes as a result of that. They said, they gave us, we're replacing number to number units, but there were some comments about placement and stuff like that, you may find them prohibitive. Why would I further the engineering and the other comments until, you might want to just hear from the public.
Okay, so Claire, we have a date, right?
No.
No.
I would not.
Okay, well, it's up to you.
Oh, we have to-
You have to secret on this one.
The secret, the secret, but, again, let me inform your, let me inform your, your determination on that. Is there downside here from the public? I can get like a-
I always like to, but procedurally, we can't.
But then he wants to waive that, that secret should be done, there's a part of the code that says secret has to be done before completeness. Now, if he wants to waive that, understanding that we get to the hearing and the town engineer does not say complete, we, we either keep it open or deem it incomplete.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
But you'd have to, on the record, waive secret.
I'm not trying to, I'm not, of course, to consider, wait, I'm not trying to leave up on that.
No, 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 not waive secret, just, it's not complete until-
Yes, exactly, knowing that we have a time range for that. Because I haven't, I haven't broken open secret yet.
Okay, so-
There's some items that are there.
So how are we writing this?
It would be the applicant granting the extension of the, part of the code that says secret has to be done before completeness.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem. I can't ask you to do something like this, but then try to pull an aha on your secret. Of course not.
Oh, come on, John, you could always do that.
All right, so we're going to do-
I wouldn't do it unless I thought of it later.
So it's not-
But on June eighth, the other thing is the June eighth, that would be five.
Yeah, so let's, let's put it into June twenty-second.
And then he admitted there's public interest.
Yeah, so I would-
Let's do June twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Ah, I'm just, I'm being selfishly trying to, you know.
I know, June twenty-second. Okay, so we are-
So Claire, you write, you rewrite.
I'm going to write that, so it's going to, instead of saying secret's been done, the applicant has granted a extension of that.
A public hearing.
Because it's his to be done, so.
June twenty-two?
Yeah. Yeah, East Quad Mobile Home Park.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so motion by Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, five in favor, two absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're still with ten days to get change, like ten days?
For what?
For notification, is it ten days before?
Yeah, it's a ten day, yeah.
Thanks.
We'll, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, John, you too.
Thanks, Sean.
Twenty?
Yeah, twenty is an extension of, one year extension of the pre-app, I'm sorry.
No, well, is it, now, is this the Domena?
No.
Or it's the one fifteen?
Correct.
Okay, we're working with, two different agendas, no wonder it's confusing.
Gotcha.
Um.
This is an extension.
One fifteen and one twenty-seven Halsey Lane, and that is the address. Extension to?
One year.
For one year.
Why does it say a hundred and eighty days?
From where to when?
I don't know.
One year from today?
That's not a hundred, that's three hundred and sixty-five days.
Three hundred and sixty-five days.
That's a half a year.
I'm sorry, it is a reappraisal of the lot line modification, which is good for one eighty, a hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
It's not a typical pre, a pre-application.
So it's an extension for a hundred and eighty days.
Do we have to name the date?
We should.
So you're going to reapprove it as of April twenty-seventh, just today, and it'll be valid for a hundred and eighty days.
So we're reapproving it today?